Again, our regular board meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd, 7:00 PM, 7:00, 3:00 PM. President McCoyn may be joining us a little bit later, so I am stepping in as the Vice President. Oh, sorry. I am Anupam Chigsidhu. I am so used to having President McCoyn start the introduction. So now, I will ask my board colleagues to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Good evening. I'm Lironda Chasteng. So happy to have you here tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Patrick Keo. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Hi, good evening, Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Thank you. Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'm just overjoyed as I looked up over the audience and see some new champions that we're hiring this evening. That always just does my heart proud. Like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you after I introduce Ms. Diane Robertson, my assistant, and thank her for being here for minutes each of our meetings.
Great. Thank you. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Kurt Tuskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Beth Rael, Chief Academic Officer. Welcome, and thanks for being here.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
Okay, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are moving on to Part A of our agenda. I need a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda.
Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, Action Item 220356.
Looking for a second?
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Wilson first. Okay. It was moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Wilson. Superintendent Merritt, would you please walk us through that?
Yes, I can. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires, leaves, resignations, and retirements, as well as the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting on March the 8th and our special meeting on March the 15th. Also, for your consideration this evening, we have the final reading of the following policies. Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity. Policy 2260.01, Section 504 ADA, Prohibition Against Discrimination Based on Disability. Policy 3122-4122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Educational Opportunity. And Policy 3123-4123, Section 504 ADA, Prohibition Against Discrimination in Employment.
Okay, thank you. I am looking for a roll call vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes 6-0. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have the honor to introduce you all to two brand-new teachers in our district. So if our two English teachers could come up, please. So first, we have Robert Foster, who's going to be teaching English at Plymouth High School. He comes with a bachelor's degree from University of Tennessee, as well as a master's degree from University of Tennessee, and over nine years of experience. Welcome, Robert. When I was reviewing Robert's resume, if we want to start offering Latin, he is able to teach that. He has taught that for years, so I thought that was very unique, and I appreciate that you have that experience. Welcome. We also have Diana Salome, and both of you are going to be at Plymouth High School. Do you guys know that?
I saw the minutes.
Yeah, so great. You're going to be new colleagues. And Diana has her bachelor's and master's degree from University of Michigan, as well as over eight years of experience. So congratulations to both of you. Thank you for joining us so late in the year. We are so grateful you are both here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Diana. Thank you.
Okay, next, I would like to share with you the list of teachers who are going to be retiring in our district. And the list I'm going to share with you altogether has over 119 years of experience in our district. So I would like to congratulate the following employees who are retiring. Anita Clark, counselor from East Middle School. Bethany Gatto, media specialist from Byrd School. Marcy Parks, Canton High School math teacher. Lorene Rochellou, music teacher from Halsing. And Kimberly Sprague, elementary classroom teacher from Bentley. Thank you for your service, and please enjoy every moment of retirement. Now I have the opportunity to introduce you to four new middle school deans. So if you could come up, please. Come on up. Because of the work of the middle school administration team under the leadership of Anthony Rella and the support of the Board of Education, I am proud to introduce you to four new middle school deans. First, we have Mr. Patrick Kazown. He is going to be the Dean of Students at Discovery Middle School. Patrick comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science degree from Central Michigan University, a Master's of Curriculum Instruction from Eastern Michigan University. He currently is a middle school science and language arts teacher at Liberty Middle School. He's also worked in the district as an athletic event manager at Salem, coordinator of officials in Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and athletic liaison at Liberty Middle School. So Patrick, welcome to your new role in the district. Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Jennifer Haynes. She will be the Dean of Students at West Middle School. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University, with a major in middle school education. She's been a middle school language arts teacher, and guess who hired her in 2004 as a middle school English language arts teacher? Our Superintendent Monica Merritt.
Thank you. Yipso Lanny, West Middle School.
She is currently a high school English teacher, and she has also taught in the middle school and high school summer as a summer school teacher. So Jennifer, welcome. We are so excited that you will be a Dean of Students at West Middle School. Congratulations. Next, we have Julie Nacastree Tankart. Julie is going to be the new Dean of Students at Liberty Middle School. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree in educational leadership from Concordia University. She's been a basketball coach, middle school science and social studies teacher, as well as a department leader. Welcome to your new position. Next, we have Mr. Darian Bynum. He is going to be the Dean of Students at Pioneer Middle School. He has a bachelor's degree from University of Louisiana, a master's degree from Grand Canyon University. He's been a teaching assistant. He's a high school basketball coach. He's been a summer school coordinator, as well as academic and behavior support specialist. So welcome, Darian. Congratulations to the four of you.
Congratulations, Patrick. If anyone would like to share a few words, you're welcome to.
I would just like to say thank you.
Oh, come up to the podium, please.
We're recorded, so.
Okay. I'd just like to say thank you to the district and the board for, A, just making the decision to have this position, to me, very well needed in support of the students, and approving this position as well, and obviously hiring us. I'm excited to work with the three of them moving forward, and hopefully a fifth for East, and just kind of building this position to do as much as we can for students. So thank you.
I'm short, so bring that down. I just would like to also say thank you for deciding to have this position. I think it's greatly needed as well. I also want to say thank you to the interview committee. They did an outstanding job. And I want to say hello to all of the West Middle School families out there who may be watching. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm, excuse me, excited to be in the school district, and I've kind of been in the community for a long time, so I'm excited to join the school district. Thank you.
Thank you to all the board members. Thank you to the interview committee. I know it was a long and trying process. Being in the office this last fall, I know how much this position is absolutely needed. So thank you very much to everybody. We look forward to getting started and getting our feet dirty in the fall. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations on the new positions and the new hires. It's exciting. All right, next up is celebrating success, and we have Member Chasteng to do this honor. I'm sorry, Christensen, I saw the C.
The C.
It's okay. We look alike. That's right, LC.
You did it last week, right? That's why it's stuck in my head.
And our initials are the same.
I just want to say I'm honored to be presenting the celebrating success for this board meeting. I'm just going to jump right in. So celebrating success this evening will honor Ms. Anne Espinoza, one of many amazing visual and performing arts teachers at Plymouth Canton Educational Park, who has gone above and beyond to guide her students through their creative endeavors. Ms. Espinoza recently received the Inspiring Educator Award through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which she was nominated for by her students. The competition asked students to recommend teachers who they felt had helped them, pushed them, mentored them, and inspired them. Contest officials said that multiple students took the time to nominate Ms. Espinoza, making it very clear what a remarkable impact she has on her students. Salem High School Principal Kim Villarosa was not able to join us this evening, but she has written the following tribute about Ms. Espinoza and the positive impact teachers like her have on PCEP students. Anne Espinoza is very deserving of the Extra Myler Award. Anne has been an exceptional art teacher to have at Salem High School. She builds great relationships with her students and helps them develop very creative photographic art. Anne assists new teachers when they become a part of the art department to build and strengthen their skills. In addition, Anne regularly supports students after school, as well as during the summer. Anne is always calm and patient with her students and creates a supportive classroom environment. It is a privilege to work with Anne at Salem High School, and we are honored to have her as a park educator. On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Anne Espinoza with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Myler Award for going the extra mile to providing a learning environment where students feel supported and can explore creative outlets.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Would you like to say anything about your experience teaching at the park?
Thank you very much for this honor. Thank you for supporting the arts. You know, art classes are not cheap, as you probably know, so, and photo in particular tends to be sort of expensive. And I do feel very supported, and I hear horror stories from other photo teachers around the country and, you know, of what they have to work with. And I'm always bragging about, you know, the support that we have here, you know, not just from the board, but from the parents. The district, I think, really supports the arts. And it's so important right now because it's sometimes the only way kids can really express themselves. And, you know, some kids say, you know, "I'm coming to school because of this class. You know, I love this class." And, you know, if that's what gets them up and gets them going, then I think that's really important. So thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to Letter C, Board Committee Reports and Action Items. Since President McCoyn is not here, I'm not sure if she had a stack of things that she wanted to share with you. So I'm just going to share things with you from my side as a Vice President on what's been happening. The first, the most exciting piece is we held our first community forum last week, Wednesday, and it was phenomenal to get out in front of the community, have those engaging conversations, and be face-to-face. Last year, we did our community forum in a virtual environment. So it was great to see people face-to-face and engage in those conversations. I want to thank Member Wilson for hooking us up with the Imagine Theater, which was a great venue for popcorn and pop, as we talked about our dynamic plan. I also want to thank Superintendent Merritt for taking that time to join us and talk about all the amazing work that's happening at Plymouth Canton. And one of the parents actually said at the beginning, he's like, "You know, thank you for coming out and doing this. We've been asking the board to do community forums, and here you are. Thank you for that." So I want to thank that parent for showing up on an evening. I know how precious evenings are for families and parents. So we hope to do more of this. To that parent, yes, we're going to do more of those. And to my board colleagues, time to sign up for more community forums.
Thanks for setting the bar so high.
You're welcome. What's coming up this week, we have an exciting event at PCEP tomorrow that I'll be doing. It's the PCEP Extravaganza. It's, I don't know how many colleges and career, I think Superintendent Merritt's going to give a detailed highlight, but that's an exciting thing that's happening tomorrow. And on March 24th, I will be joining Superintendent Merritt and others on a community forum on school safety and security. So that's all I have. Next up is Student Performance and Achievement. That is me again. We have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is coming up on April 6th at 5:00 PM. But I do want to remind board colleagues that some items that are going to be up for review today or approval are the things that we discussed at our last SPA meeting about the curriculum resources. We actually had conversations about that during our last meeting. And the next one is Policy Committee. Since President McCoyn is not here, I will do that update as well. I was not prepared to do all this talking. All right, so today, we went through our Policy Committee meeting, looking at our old business of anti-harassment policies that we updated. New business items that we discussed were animals on district property, emergency medical authorization, do not resuscitate for minor students, physician order for scope of treatment, that was a new policy, and criminal justice information security, another new policy that we're looking at. So four of those are going to move forward to the board in the coming meetings, but the last one, we're going to do a little bit more work at. And the next meeting for the Policy Committee is April 26th at 5:30 PM. All right, next up is F and O with Member Keo.
Great. We met last Thursday, March 17th, here in this boardroom. And we discussed at that time the EL2 package. This is the Learning Commons in Office furniture that'll be up on the agenda here this evening. We had an in-depth review and discussion with our custodial providers and custodial team, which you'll see a presentation here tonight. We had a review of our transportation KPIs and had a long discussion with them on how to increase driver hiring and how to get a new candidate pool to help to support that. There's a new manager there, and he's got some creative ideas that we're hoping will help us address things. But it is still a very difficult time to be, to find enough drivers for us. So if you have anybody who knows who's interested, please reach out. We need drivers. We need them right now. We also reviewed the financial statements for the month of February, and we did a quick review of the budget survey presentation that we'll be doing this evening. Our next F and O is Thursday, April 7th at 5:00 PM. It's here in this boardroom, and we welcome the community to attend. We'll have an update on the budget process again, as well as a review on the second half of the high school nadatorium project and that activity, and the playground equipment recommendations for the EL2, so for the other elementary schools that we're doing. And that'll be for on Thursday, April 7th.
All right, thank you, Member Keo. And just a reminder to the community that all of our committee meetings are open to the public. We'd love to have you. All right, next up is Letter D, Administrative Reports and Recommendations, starting with the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Before bragging about our amazing students and staff, I do want to echo Member Keo's just acknowledgement of you setting the bar very high as you three board members, Member Sidhu, Member Chasteng, Member Wilson, on the community forum. It was absolutely outstanding. When we look to say our dynamic plan, one of those pillars is really about community engagement. And we say PCCS, what do we stand for? Plymouth Canton Community School. So having that opportunity to really engage with the community, to hear about their visions for, we're not a one-size-fits-all school district. We have a vision that we want to make sure that every student has what they need to be successful. And so they truly did set the bar high, did this crowdsource, and I think Member Chasteng brought that workshop there, had interactive engagement with the members, and I'm really just looking forward to that continued. And, yeah, whoever, the next three, I'm just telling you, you're going to have to bring it because that was just an outstanding event. I just want to thank you for it. I was very encouraged by that. In bragging about our students, I just want to share a few pictures. Our students enjoyed a day of exploration at Girls' STEM in 2022. STEM enthusiastic girls participated in the annual Girls in STEM event hosted at Schoolcraft College. That was earlier this month. The fifth through eighth grade students who participated, they spent a Saturday morning learning about careers in STEM, in the STEM fields. And the day really started off with a bunch of inspirational conversations among our young female students, really encouraging other female students to get involved in math and science. They had opportunities to participate in coding and web design. And they had an esports tournament as well in the labs at Schoolcraft College. So it was an outstanding event. We want to thank all that were involved in this wonderful and inspiring event for our young students. We heard a little bit earlier about the PCEP Extravaganza. We know the gym that the park is. And we need to continue to really promote and discuss the wonderful things that occur there and the incredible opportunities for our students. Sometimes you hear even from our own students that they don't always realize all of the different electives that are available to them so that they can explore and really begin to figure out what they want to do as they move forward with their future. So PCEP Extravaganza will take place tomorrow. That is from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And this is an open house type of setting. It's open to all families in the community, or bring a friend. They don't have to live in the community. They may be interested in joining our community. So everyone is welcome. They have an opportunity to learn about Plymouth Canton Educational Park and all of the educational and extracurricular programs that are offered there. Some examples of some things that you're seeing. You'll have, all of our PCEP academic clubs and activities are going to take place in the Salem Cafeteria. And then all athletic events will be staged in the individual respective schools and their gymnasium. So everyone is welcome. We hope to see you there. It's a very exciting event to continue to showcase the gym that is the park. Want to brag a little bit about 881, the Park Radio Station, and our manager, Bill Keith. He has, he's discussing WSDP's 50th birthday with the Michigan Association of Broadcasters. As we know, 881, the park, WSDP celebrated its 50th anniversary this past February. And Bill Keith recently sat down with Sam Clement, the president and CEO of Michigan Associations of Broadcasters, to discuss our station's success throughout the years and really the benefit that it's provided to our students and the community. And also, most recently, the Plymouth Historical Museum's new special exhibit, Connecting at the Speed of Life. And this is honoring our 50th anniversary of 881, the park. So you can watch this full conversation on our official district website, and I encourage all to take a look at that. Just a phenomenal program, phenomenal leadership, and we are really appreciative of the work and opportunity it provides for our students. Finally, just some good news to share in terms of a shift. With our breakfast program, we are again able to begin serving breakfast within our school buildings in the morning. This is going to be effective Monday, April 4th. If you recall, throughout our COVID experience, we shifted to breakfast bags that were sent home with the students. So those final bags will be sent home on March the 24th, and we'll again be able to open up our kitchens for our students, our cafeterias for our students to have breakfast at school. And we want to thank Ms. Kristin Hennessy and her team for all of the work that they've done throughout this pandemic, but just in general, providing our students and families with the nourishment that they need during all of the past few years. Kristin will always say, "We are nourishing our minds so that they can, our bodies, so we can prepare our minds for our students to learn in the classroom," and we appreciate that work. As I bring closure today, just want to give, just a quick kind of foreshadowing of what is to come. We are working to update our mitigation guidelines for the remainder of the year. I know people have been asking about the guidelines, and I continue to remind everyone that this is a large district, and it takes time to make sure that we're educating internally before we release externally. So we've had the last, the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to just make sure that we've allowed for feedback, board member feedback, administrative feedback, our reentry task force, to just take a look at the guidelines. Where, really, the goal was to make sure that we're consistent with the Wayne County Health Department, MDHHS, the CDC, the recent guidelines that have come out over the last few weeks. Looking right now, I'm very encouraged by our low numbers, our low cases within our district. And so really, the focus, as we hopefully remain low and stay through the end of this year, is just to continue to make sure that we are utilizing prevention strategies within our schools. We now have the guidelines that are adjusted with low, medium, and high, such as the CDC levels have indicated, and really just putting an emphasis at all levels on the screening process, making sure that people are taking care and adhering to the daily screening process. Just really encouraging testing, if you're feeling sick, to stay home. Proper hand hygiene, ventilation, MERV 13 filters will still be used. Proper hand hygiene, once again, looking at distancing guidelines and making sure that we're utilizing that language within the Wayne County Health Department. We continue to optimize spacing. We're feasible. We're also encouraging within our classrooms that opportunity to move forward with just age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate activities. So what does that mean? That means that students are allowed to work in groups. There's flexible seating that's allowed, collaborative group work is allowed, carpet time is allowed, games, activities. And so just moving one step closer to a little bit of normalcy for our students. So again, we've gotten a lot of feedback on the guidelines, and we'll be looking to present those or share those with our community. It has low, medium, and high. So in the event that we do have an uptick and have to return, for example, to a high level of spread, what things would we consider as additional mitigation factors to keep our students safe? So we'll look forward to sharing those. One big piece of information I do want to share that's a part of the guidelines. On March the 11th, the state of Michigan did rescind the order that doesn't, no longer requires us to post daily cases. You just have to have a case identification process so that you know the cases that are available within your school. We have decided, after talking to many stakeholders, that we're going to continue for the time being to just post our cases on the dashboard, although it's not a requirement. Daily, everyone in the community would be able to see the cases that we have, the positive cases in the district. So we will not continue with the case notification letters that have gone out during the end of the week. We've gotten feedback that those are not as helpful to many families, but to be able to see daily where our cases are in our district is something that they appreciate. So we're going to do that again when we return back from spring break. So that is it. If there are any questions about anything I shared, I'm open to questions now. If not, we can move on.
Thank you for the clarification on visitors and update on the mitigation plans. Any comments or questions?
I'm just excited to have this and be in the position that we're in right now. So I'm also very excited that we're being proactive in the unlikely event that we will see a surge or a change, that we can revert back to necessary protections because we've done well this year. We've kept our students in person and in school where we know that for the majority of them, that's the best place for them to be.
Thank you. Since President McCoyn is here, I would like to hand off the official work back to her. And we have just gone through D, Part 1, but I want to give you the opportunity to provide any parts of the president's report that you wanted to share. If I, I only mentioned our community forum from last week and some things that are happening this week. And I really want to thank the members who did the community forum. It was well received. It is a lot of work, but I really appreciate it. We do want to continue to do those. Need to find my report, but that was really what I wanted to focus on. We also had board governance last week with Ms. Cross. And we got a lot of work done, including the operating principles, which we will go over tonight as a first read. And then we're going to continue our work with her, and she wants some possible topics. And I've sent those out in an email. It's a draft right now, but, so we'll do that. And then there's some community events coming up this week. Tomorrow night is the PCEP Extravaganza, if anybody's wanting to go to that. And then Thursday is the Safety For- And then Thursday is the safety forum at the park. If you want to go to that, let Monica and I know because she will then RSVP for us.
And it's P-A-R-C, not, not.
Yeah, P-A-R-C, the old Central Middle School, downtown Plymouth. Thank you so much. Next up is Finance and Operation with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you. This evening, we have with us representatives from ABM, Eric Hudgens, Kyle Fellenbaum, and Melissa Mascarello. Mascarello, I can never get that right. Sorry about that. And our own Rich Welsh, they're gonna give a presentation and where we're at with the custodial KPIs and some other information about their firm.
First and foremost, good evening, board. On behalf of ABM, we'd first like to thank you first for the partnership. We really appreciate that, excuse me. And second, the opportunity to present this evening. This evening, we'll be presenting, as Deb alluded to, our KPI data for the second quarter, which started back on December first of 2021 and went through February 28th of 2022. At ABM, we start each day with a safety moment. As I mentioned in previous presentations, safety is paramount to ABM. We do strive to be the best in class as it relates to workplace safety in efforts to protect our staff, our clients, and most importantly, the communities we serve. So obviously, prior to every meeting, both internal and external, we will conduct a brief safety meeting. Today's safety meeting is on flu prevention, which can be achieved through three preventative steps. First being, get your flu vaccine. Two, you can boost your immunity through some healthy habits, such as good hygiene and also a nice, healthy diet. And three, probably most importantly, if you're sick, stay home. The agenda this evening, Melissa, our account manager for operations here at PCCS, will be taking us through the second quarter KPI data and also the staffing report. Then she'll hand it over to me and I'm pinch hitting for Rachel Davis, our HR director. I'll be going through her retention and staffing survey, which she conducted earlier this month. And then at the end, we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
All right. So this slide here, what you'll see is a summary of our quality control program, which was over the past quarter, December first through February 28th. And since our staffing levels have improved over the past quarter, my management team and myself have been able to focus more on our inspection process. And we've really emphasized in performing inspections in every building this past quarter. And we'll continue, continue our efforts moving forward to achieve continuous improvement. And as you can see here on this slide, we have doubled our data in almost every category with a slight increase in our overall quarterly average score from quarter one. This slide here is our average inspection score across the district by month. The graph represents, like I said, the average. In the dark blue there, you'll see the second quarter average. And then we've also provided the quarter one in the light blue. And then perspective months. So green is our December with our highest score, mainly due to obviously mild weather at the time, as well as having that Christmas break. So more of our managers were doing inspections on the detailed cleaning that we were performing during those times versus when students were in the building. And then you'll see in January, there was a dip as far as our average scores. And a lot of that was contributed to the weather that we were experiencing at the time with the snow and salt being tracked in onto our floors. And we'll go through that when we break up kind of all the categories. You'll see where a lot of our deficiencies were and a lot of that was with the floor care. And then same thing with February, just a larger dip. We saw a lot more snow and salt being put out. So that obviously was being tracked into the buildings, which contributed to a lot of the issues that we were seeing. But as you can see, the overall quarter two, which I spoke about, was a slight increase from that quarter one average that we had. This slide here is our average score per building for the second quarter. You can see we did add a target line to the graph and that target line for the district for inspections of the scores were ninety percent. Some of our highest buildings were Canton, Starkweather, Dodson, Allen, Field, and Gallimore. And some of our lower scoring buildings were Salem, Plymouth, Goals, Holstein, and Farron. And then this next slide, very similar. It's just the number of inspections per building for the second quarter. Again, you'll see that target line. Our target average inspection count for the district was eight inspections per building for the month. And then, you know, some of the most inspections that we performed were in Farron, Workman, Plymouth, the board office. And the fewest inspections throughout the district were the transportation building, East, Goals, Salem, and Holben. And we did want to point out, you know, at our last meeting, Mr. Keogh had mentioned that, you know, we, we did fall a little short on some of those larger buildings where we saw more issues or things that we needed to correct. So we will be using this data to emphasize where the additional inspections are needed moving forward, based on the scores that we're seeing as we're in those buildings. Ideally, we do want most of the inspections to take place where we do see those lower scores. So in quarter three, that's really what we're gonna be focusing on at that point. This slide here, another graph for you, the average score per area for the second quarter. And this is where you'll see some of those areas with like hard surface, where we were struggling a little bit with the snow and salt being tracked in. And then, so kind of the same concept, where we will conduct more inspections in the areas that we see where there's lower scores that are being produced, which the worst areas this quarter were stairwells, common areas in our lobbies. Those common areas were more of the hard surface areas again. And then the best areas that we saw were in elevators, the exterior, gym, carpeted common areas, and carpeted break rooms. And then this slide here, this shows our top 10 deficient items. And it really just kind of paints a picture of the drop in score over the winter months. Again, what we've been mentioning, the floor care, that salt really does eat up the floor. And as you'll see, six of the top 10 deficient items were contributed to the floor appearance. And then this slide here is the top 10 deficient items compared to the percentage of times the items were deficient. As you see on the left-hand side there, the vertical numbers, they were the number of times the area was inspected. And that goes, that correlates with the blue bar graphs. And then on the right-hand side, the vertical numbers, that is the average inspection score for the area. And that is in correlation with the orange line graph that you see. And then I'm gonna hand it to Rich for a minute.
Hello, everybody. So this is our, our own Google Docs missed task form sheet that we have with our PCEA members and all staff in the building. A couple of things that we saw. Quarter one, we had 2,745 tasks that were logged into the Google Doc sheet. Quarter two, it did dip down to 830, which is about a, you know, 2,000 difference. Couple of things that I want to talk about that. I believe there are a few factors that went into this decrease in missed tasks from quarter one. First, our own staff had been offered additional stipends to clean their own spaces. Second, ABM has increased staffing. The quality of work being done has increased as well. ABM staff now have time to take the extra few minutes per classroom to address potential misses. And they are getting to know the buildings better. There's more consistency. They're staying in the buildings. They're not being moved from building to building. And all of this is really adding to the decrease in the missed tasks. We had a couple of members that were asking, just wanted to make sure that there was any correlation to this. You know, we still have people going on Google Docs. They're still, they're still using it. We're still seeing it. It's the same people, there's just less, there's less issues on it.
And then this here, we wanted to address our third quarter goals. So based upon our inspection results over this past quarter, floor care will be one of our focal points in all areas, as well as we will be addressing the glass during our spring break cleaning. And then also, we want to continue to address our staffing and increase from where we're at and just continue improving there, as well as just continuing to develop our staff and train them and make sure they know what it is expected of them moving forward. So, and then I will pass it back on to Kyle here. Oh, it's still me. I lied, sorry. One more. So this here is our staffing. And this table here, it represents the summary since inception through the end of this past last quarter, which was February 28th. As you can see, our results have continued to improve in all categories while our turnover remains pretty much flat with the turnover rate year-to-date being seventeen point nine, you know, basically eighteen percent. On the left here, you will see our staffing levels as of last week. This is forever changing, day-to-day, where our staffing is, depending on whether we get new hires coming in, if we have staff that leave. You know, we had some changes happen last week, but we are back at that exact same headcount as of today with some new employees starting as well this week. So now I will pass it on to Kyle, so.
Awesome, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I am pinch hitting today for Rachel Davis, our human resources director. Earlier this month, she did conduct a hiring retention survey with all of our staff in efforts to see what we're doing well and where we can improve as it relates to hiring and more importantly, retention. We surveyed all 93 hourly workforce. Received eighty percent of our surveys back, which is seventy-five surveys. So that's fantastic. It did produce some very solid data for us to review. First, some quick facts. As you can see, as it relates to our market competitors in the area, in the nearby area, our average, I'm sorry, our wage rates are much more attractive than theirs with our average, I'm sorry, wage rates for a custodian being sixteen fifty an hour and also lead custodians at seventeen fifty an hour. We also compared our current wage rates within industry standards for the custodians in Wayne County. We used both the ERI Wage Analysis, which is the Economic Research Institute, and also the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We got their information as well. As it relates to the ERI Wage Analysis, did generate a sixteen dollar and twenty-nine cent hourly wage for those with three years' experience. And that three-year mean is what we typically use as a barometer to figure out or establishes wage rates for a local area. The Bureau of Labor Statistics generated average wage rate for sixteen fifty an hour. So you can see that our current wage rates of the sixteen fifty and the seventeen fifty an hour are where it needs to be right now as it relates to today's market. And continuing with quick facts, this is a employee profile of our 93 staff that we surveyed. Of those 93 staff, fifty-seven percent of them were female, forty-three percent were male, go ladies. The predominant age was between ages of forty-six and sixty, which is our millennials. The top two races were both African-American, also white, and coming in third was Albanian. Average length of service for our staff at Plymouth Canton Community Schools is one year and one month. Please note, this is slightly skewed because of our ABM staff. We did have some ABM staff that transferred in from other locations when we began our operations back in July. For example, we have an employee that was hired back in 2014 that's now working at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. A quick overview of our site turnover. This is data since inception, which we are very proud of, not the turnover, the turnover rate, which remains very low right now, about eighteen percent, which demonstrates that our employees enjoy working for ABM and more importantly, enjoy working at PCCS. So it's very important to us. Currently, we're having, we're averaging about fourteen new hires a month. And we're also losing about three a month. That's a net gain of eleven employees per month if we continue this trend. For the employees that left ABM, the top reasons for them leaving were, one, they didn't provide us reason why they left or we didn't gather the information. And the other top reason was they accepted employment elsewhere. There were thirty terminations since inception. However, twelve of those thirty terminations never began employment with ABM. That's quite common in our industry. So if you take those twelve out, we literally had, or we actually had eighteen employees that turned over that began work with ABM since inception. And that equates to an actual turnover rate of about 2.25 FTEs per month, which is again outstanding. The summary of staffing, another way of looking at it, also viewing the pipeline that we have right now. Important to note on the left side, the applicants are contacted within 24 hours of submitting their application. This is done by our talent acquisition team. This is very, very important because time is of an essence. We want to get our hands on them before anyone else does because the labor pool is very large, but everybody is also looking for labor. So we want to make sure we find employees and get them as soon as possible. As relates to openings, we are currently down eighteen FTEs. However, it's also twenty-three positions because ten of those positions are part-time positions, which equates to five FTEs. In addition to our goals, we do want to hire about ten substitute custodians. This additional staff will help supplement any absenteeism or unforeseen turnover that we may have in the near future. So add that to our goals. As relates to our applicant pipeline, we do have thirty-nine currently in the pipeline, three of which started this week. And we are also continuing on providing recruiting incentives to attract that additional staff with a thousand dollar sign-on bonus and also a five hundred dollar referral bonus. When our HR director was interviewing potential candidates, we she did list that the top issue of getting staff was due to the physical demands of the job. Team member engagement. These are, excuse me, in efforts to improve our retention effort or our retention process. Rachel, our HRD, did survey our entire staff with these questions. And I will definitely, I will be reviewing the answers to those questions here in the next few slides. But again, important to note that eighty percent of our staff did return surveys. So that's phenomenal data and it's very, very helpful for us as an operation team. In consideration of time, I will, yeah, I will just answer the top two questions for each question that was asked to our staff. When asked, what do you like most about working at ABM? The top answers were all the above, with twenty-four percent, and then followed by location, eighteen percent. When asked, when is the last time you thought about leaving ABM and what prompted it? Fifty-nine percent said they never want to leave ABM, which is promising. And nine percent of them said that they thought about it in the last month. And the reasons are, sixty-four percent said for personal reasons and twenty-three percent said it was because of pay. When asked, what makes you want to stay at ABM? Forty percent said it's because of a steady paycheck. And sixteen percent said it's because of our management team, kudos to Melissa. And then when asked, what do you look forward to each day when you commute to work? Their answers were thirty-seven percent, the work that they do on a daily basis. And obviously, thirty-two is earning a paycheck, earning some money. Continuing with the questions. When asked, if you stayed at ABM, what position would you like to have? Forty percent of them said staying in the same position. Twenty-eight percent said becoming a lead or a working lead. When asked, what can ABM do to make the job better? Fifty-seven percent of them said keeping all employees accountable so you don't have to pick up the slack for anyone else. And that was followed by thirty-one percent, which is more recognition. On that note, next week is National Recognition Week for ABM. So across the country, we'll be recognizing our hourly workforce. Here at Plymouth, I believe we're doing it over spring break, obviously to avoid any interruptions with our operations. So we'll be treating them to meals, small gifts and some prizes. So that's exciting. When asked, what actions can ABM take to build a better workplace? Forty-two percent said better benefits. And thirty-five percent said more training, which, take note, it was one of our goals for the third quarter is more training for our staff. And lastly, when asked, what would you like, like to learn more of? Fifty-one percent of them said teamwork and twenty-one percent said how to clean, which I will chalk up to training. And again, we're gonna attack that in our third quarter. And that would conclude the presentation and open up for questions and discussion.
Patrick? I'm sorry, Mr. Keogh.
Am I next? Am I first? Excellent. We actually had a really long discussion about this in the FNO meeting, so I won't rehash people on this. I do want to point out to those in the board, those watching at home, those in the audience, that although we're making progress with our hiring, we're not where we need to be. We're supposed to have 104 custodians, full-time equivalents, right now. We're at eighty-four. And, you know, eighty-four is where we're at now with the three that have just come on. So, you know, we're not hiring at the rate that we said we need, we would, or I'm sorry, that ABM said that they would when we brought you on as a process. And the process that you're doing for inspections and everything else isn't really meeting the expectations yet. I very much appreciate the transparency that you have with the survey. And, you know, seeing that fifty-seven percent of people feel that there's an accountability problem, I think is going to be something you need to, to address. And as we discussed in the, in the FNO committee, we'd like to see this as a longitudinal survey. So we'd like to see this survey again in six months and see what, whether we're seeing the same results and whether you guys have addressed those, those issues and concerns that have come up. I do appreciate the spirit of partnership with our, our operations team and the work that's happening with our cleaning technicians and our plant engineers. And I think that we're making progress. It just isn't happening fast enough, so.
Ms. Doo?
Thank you. When I looked at the slide for the turnover rate, and I think you mentioned that you didn't ask or they didn't give a reason, I'm wondering if there's something... didn't ask or they didn't give a reason, I'm wondering if there's something more proactive that you could do to find out why people are leaving so those, whatever the challenges or issues could be resolved if possible. So right now, you don't know why twenty-one people left.
Correct. The main reason is they resign without notice, so our efforts in there contacting them to come to work, and you can chime in if you want, why they didn't come into work or why they resigned, we either don't know why or they didn't return our message or answer.
Okay, so you're having a follow-up phone call and they're just not returning your call?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And just for reference, some of those twenty-one are reflected in the twelve that never began employment, correct?
That's correct.
Twelve people that just said they were going to work and then never showed up.
Yeah, this is hard. All right, thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
No questions.
All right. Mr. Brooks.
I answered, they answered all my questions during the meeting, FNO meeting.
All right. Ms. Chastain.
I have a comment, but Member Kehoe really expressed some of my concerns, but he was so eloquent in speech, I don't think that I need to restate it. But I do want to say, just, I want to reinforce that I appreciate the transparency. It is rare that you work with and partner with an organization that will be as transparent as you all were tonight. There is still work to do. I certainly appreciate it. I appreciate working with and partnering with an organization that has signaled that they care about their workforce, and so I'm looking forward to seeing the data in six months or twelve months, whenever you do it again, but I certainly appreciate the transparency. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Christensen.
Yeah, I was not at FNO, so I wasn't privy to the conversations that we had prior, so forgive me if this was already covered by my colleagues in conversation, but looking at slide seven, six and seven, I mean, you talk about the quarterly averages, and Melissa, I think you did a great job talking about why there are dips from month to month, but overall, we're averaging higher than quarter one, which I think we expected because there was certainly a learning curve when we first started. But then looking at slide seven, you know, you acknowledged that Salem High School is one of the lowest scores, and quite frankly, it's drastically lower than a lot of the other buildings, ranked, you know, between sixty and seventy percent. I'm just wondering, do we have, I'm sure, but if you can enlighten me and the community what the plans are to improve upon those scores for our lower, lowest-ranked buildings.
Absolutely. So really, Salem specifically, there weren't as many inspections either overall, and that contributed to a lot of the inspections that were done, and then they were lower. That's really where you kind of see why it's so low, but one of the things that we are looking at is, you know, obviously increasing the inspections in those buildings that are larger and that require more attention as far as where are we not seeing improvement or where do we need to improve? It's really just really focusing on those and getting in there and working with those staff and getting the retraining done that's needed as well. So really, it's really just making sure that the staff know what they need to do and just spending more time in those buildings as well with the management.
Okay, thank you. Are you done?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. So I was wondering, previously, this might be from Mr. Welch, previously, there was that program where people got like a shout-out, they got money.
So that was with the previous company with their wow's?
Is that, is there anything like that being done?
Yes, and that is something that we have talked about bringing back, and there is a spot in the Google Docs for them to be able to do that so that we know, so we see it as well. And yes, that is something that, you know, Todd and I, not Todd, Todd's not here, I'm sorry, but Todd and I have talked about with, about bringing back some sort of initiative program to give that so that, you know, people can give the, feel the appreciation when somebody says, hey, that was a great job.
Yeah, because up there on the slide, they talked about recognition, and that's a real tangible way to say thank you. Cash. It's the best way. And then I was wondering about, so I'm seeing like some of these missed tasks, is there, and I think we've covered this before, is there a priority list of things that you have to do? Like, if I've got a certain amount of time and I've got to get all these rooms cleaned, like, high dusting is great, but the teacher really needs your floor swept and the garbage emptied. So is there a priority list to make sure we're hitting some of those?
Yes. We issue housekeeping checkoff lists for every type of area. This is actually a big discussion at FNO meeting last Thursday. What our goal now moving forward is to take these checkoff lists, again, which are specific for room type, and now we want to take it a step further and get a little deeper into weeds and get actual room number inspection types. So room A, although maybe a classroom, we need to jot down it has, you know, five trashcans versus the typical three, so our staff that's going in there know to at least look for and attempt to empty five trashcans versus a normal three, if that answers your question. There is a checklist for every type of room in the facility, though.
I was just wondering, because when I look at this, like, the missed task, like, Farrend has the most, and it's not really that big of a school.
Right.
And that was actually Member Brooks's feedback, is that that was something that needed to be done, is, you know, have a list on the back of the door or another process, and we weren't specifically advocating for a particular mechanism, but having some way to know how that was done, you know, it was, we had a long and productive conversation on that front desk in that process.
Yeah, because, you know, it's great that the missed tasks went way down, but, you know, Farrend and then, you know, Halsey, they're not really huge schools. And that was just my comment.
All right, and we also use our inspection data, like, the deficiency list to find out exactly where we need to specialize or training on with our staff. So yes, in addition to those checklists and then also our inspection data, I think that we'll continuously improve, that's the name of the game, right, to continuously improve our operations. And again, with your feedback and your partnership, I think it's one-hundred percent achievable, so.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, just one comment. So moving forward for these types of presentations, you know, I would love, I'd love the presentations, I love the amount of data that you are able to provide, but I would love to see if there's a way that we can streamline the presentations to focus on the trouble areas, the trouble spots, so that we can really dig into that. I think some of the transparency and the, you know, some of the transparency around the feedback from your employees is fantastic, and I think that that's something that the board can review in advance and come with any specific questions, but, you know, thirty minutes review on the facilities on, you know, where we are with them, I think is a bit long.
Sure.
And one of the things I know we've talked about a lot as a board recently is, one, we want to make sure that we're coming to the board meetings prepared, so that means reviewing the information in advance so that you don't have to go slide by slide, and we can really focus on the problem areas first and foremost and really get that information out the way, because a lot of times, I think we'll get lost in the details, and that's not really the board's role. You know, our role is not to be in the weeds, our board, the board's role is to really look high level at, are we meeting the goals that we set? And so some of those early graphs were really helpful, especially when you drew a line to say, this is what our goal is, and then we could see what schools were specifically falling short, that's perfect data. But then I think when we get into, you know, the floors or this or that, I think that's a lot of detail, but at the end of the day, you're the professionals, that's, you know, that's what you are going to solve for. For us is, how do we bring that eighty to a ninety or ninety to ninety-five or whatever the goal is? So I just wanted to, you know, openly say, I think, once again, great information, I wouldn't shorten what you provide because I know a lot of board members really like to go through that, but just from a presentation standpoint, I would love to see if we could streamline it to more of the problem areas that we could focus on as a board.
Understood, thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
I do want to share to their defense, and I know as board governance-
But I wasn't attacking, I wasn't attacking, I was just giving feedback.
No, no, let me finish my thought.
You don't have to defend them, you don't have to.
So what I just wanted to share, not in a defense, is that we actually, as a part of the process at FNO, went through their slides, and they were asked which slides to take away and add. So I know we, as a board governance team, are going to talk about what we, what information we want, but this presentation and the actual slides, we went through and they delivered the slides that we asked them to share tonight.
So we're sorry.
Thank you very much. The delivery needs to be shortened, content there, delivery shortened.
And it was shorter than what it originally was, so this is, this is about, this is about-
It could be in the appendix with, in the presentation as an executive summary.
Exactly, this is about sixty percent of the content that was there, but I think that the message is heard is that we need a summarization in here while the full content is there for the community, because the community, this is where they need to see it, but a summarization and presentation is the key.
Yeah.
And we'll probably still have the in-depth conversation while we're not doing as well as we should be in FNO, so don't do it.
That's right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have an action item, twenty-two oh three fifty-seven, consider approval of a resolution for awards for bid package EL two, Bid, Byrd, Miller, and Smith Elementary Schools, this is the final reading, looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for awards for bid package EL two, Bid, Miller, and Smith Elementary Schools, action item twenty-two oh three fifty-seven, final reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. Does anybody have any questions? We did talk about this at our last meeting. Okay, if not, I will call for the vote, all in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no.
I abstain, I didn't, I'm an abstention.
Okay, I'm sorry. Back to the column for that, thank you. Then we are on to action item twenty-two oh three fifty-eight, consider approval of resolution for awards for bid package EL two playground equipment, final reading, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for awards for bid package EL two playground equipment, action item twenty-two oh three fifty-eight, final reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, consider approval of resolution for award for bid package EL two playground equipment, action item twenty-two oh three fifty-eight. We also went through this last meeting. Anybody have any further questions? All right, I will call for the vote, all in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no? Abstention. All right, move on. Then we have action item twenty-two oh three fifty-nine, consider approval of resolution for bid package EL two, Learning Commons and Office Furniture, this is a first and final reading, so are we going to have some discussion on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
We did discuss this last meeting, but they didn't have all the quotations completed, so we did get a presentation by TMP, our architects, on bid pack EL two, this is the summer twenty-twenty-two projects at Byrd, Smith, and Miller. This is the furniture for the-
Learnings Commons.
Learning Commons, thank you, Learning Commons and Office Furniture, and based on the long delays in shipping due to supply chain issues and the necessity of getting this out, they requested at FNO last week on Thursday, a first and final for tonight. You did see some of the pictures, the quoted cost for Phase Two furniture is about two-hundred-thousand oh eighty-five thirty-two, the twenty-twenty bond budget for this furniture was about two-sixty-five, so the furniture will result in a positive variance. Again, we discussed this at the board meeting on March eighth and again at the last two FNOs on March third and on March seventeenth.
All right, does anybody have any questions? All right, I'm looking for motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for bid pack EL two, Learning Commons and Office Furniture, action item twenty-two oh three fifty-nine, first and final reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks, action item twenty-two oh three fifty-nine, consider approval of a resolution for bid package EL two, Learning Commons and Office Furniture, first and final reading, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Abstain. All right. Now we are on to the Budget Community Forum Presentation. Is that you, Mr. Kehoe?
This is me, and this is where the tables are turned. I'm presenting and you guys get to ask all the questions as we go through this, so I'm going to do this, first of all, I'll summarize what the process is, and I will be doing this in sections because there's a lot of detail here, and I think it's worthwhile for us to have a potential conversation as we go through this. So if we go to the next slide, and we'll first frame up the process here. So the process that we have is, is we use this as a mechanism to get feedback from the community, both staff, families, community members, really anybody, as to what are the priorities that we should be looking at that goes into our budget process, and we use this as a submission to help us identify cost savings, to identify areas that we can make additional revenue, to make program changes or investments that we might do to be able to improve our educational outcome or whatever, other activities that occur as part of the budget process. This particular cycle, we had ninety budget-related suggestions from a variety of members, one member, or one community member in particular, had eleven different suggestions that they were put in, they were very thoughtful suggestions. We divided these things up, actually, Ms. Piaz with her team divides up the responses into some specific areas, athletics and activities, human resources, maintenance and custodial, teaching and learning, and then specifically for curriculum and instruction, and transportation. And you'll notice as we go through this list, there's a number next to them in parentheses. That's not the number of times that somebody addressed that, but it's more the specific entry that we had in the survey process because that gives us the ability to link that. So if you see three numbers in parentheses, that means that three people had something on that same theme, and the number there is reflective of the specific item that came up as part of the process. So you can see this here as we look at the next slide, that the first one here on funding for marching band programs, there was one item, that was the first survey response that came in with that particular process. So the approach that we'll take here is we'll go through each of these different pages or sections, and we'll kind of provide some color commentary around these items that have come up, and we'll give an opportunity for the board to ask questions or to weigh in into those particular topics so that we can use this for input and feedback as we go forward. You know, we as board members have had the opportunity to use the same process to submit questions, the questions are all done anonymously in terms of how they go in, we can certainly continue to weigh in on these things. This is an opportunity for us to give our additional input and feedback on both these suggestions as well as the process that goes ultimately into the budget process. These things come into the administration, the administration goes through and works through this with all the respective teams as to what goes into the budget activity, and then it ultimately ends up to into a transformation process where they try to reconcile all those things together, and then bring that budget back to us as the board to be able to consider. So if there's things that are particularly important to us, that are called out as part of this, these items here, or things that we're talking about in these areas, now is the time for us to have that public conversation about those particular items. And I'm sure I'm going to miss things as I go through, and Ms. Merritt, yourself, any of your staff that has additional context that you want to bring forward on some of these things, we'll do that as we go. So well, first, we'll start out with the marching, funding for the marching band program, and this is a common theme that we see, where people ask us about the funding for the marching band program and how we can provide that additional investment in that process, and how the extra costs that people see on this that goes above and beyond the feet of play is part of this. So we've had some conversations about a re-review of all of our athletics and activities programs and how those things are funded, and they'll likely be, not necessarily in this budget cycle, but as a review process that we will do in a subsequent board meeting to go deeper into that particular activity. How do we determine which things get funded at what levels as part of this process so we can have a deeper conversation there? There was also seven people that had mentioned specifically funding for the district music programs overall, you know, clearly an interest in the arts and music and how we make those kinds of investments and the things that they want to see as part of that. There is improvement to the athletics facilities that would allow us to do rentals, so this is specifically a message that is both making improvements to the athletics facilities, but also the opportunity to create some additional revenue from being able to do that. And as we've discussed before, as a board, the bond program that we have is touching every single facility that we have across the district, and many of those athletic facilities and activities facilities are being, are seeing substantial investments as part of that. So I think that some of those things are already on the plate in terms of what we're doing and where we're going as part of that process. None of those things make sense as a money-making activity to just do them for rental, we're doing those things to improve the facilities for our students and for the programs that we do, but there may be a side benefit of us being able to rent those, so we're not going to make these massive investments to be able to rent the pool or do those things, but there may be some side benefits that we have as part of that process. And then the last one that's here is hiring or designate a student activities director or teacher, and this was specifically about the high school level where this question had come up, and I think that there may be some misunderstandings about this, because we actually have dedicated APs and AAs, or Assistant Principals and Athletic- or assistant principals and athletic.
Assistant.
Athletic.
Athletic director.
A Ds, sorry, A Ds. Assistant principals and athletic directors at all three of the high schools already. And those people are responsible for both athletics and student activities. So, you know, sometimes we just need to do a better job of articulating those, those items. So, I'll pause at this section, and this is what I'll do for each of the sections. Is there any questions or feedback on these ones?
Ms. DeDoo?
Thank you.
And we can go around, or you guys can, however you want to do it.
I will let President McCoy lead.
Okay, that's fine.
The roll call of the conversations.
Great.
For bullet number two, we have a lot of people talking about funding district music programs. Obviously, we have some. In the comment section, were there any explanations or details as to what is missing within our current programs?
So, it was really just investment in the programs as overall. The, the feedback were that investing in music programs would help us to increase student enrollment and to make us more of a destination district, and that really to help increase the funding to support the number of students that were interested in this process at, at every level. So, whether it be the school concerts or the, the other activities that we do to make sure that people are aware and invested in this. So, I think, for example, there was one that we had here, we're in the past. We had cut some field trips that we had done at the middle school level to the, to the high school. So, I think it was, was it for eighth grade?
Fourth grade.
The collaboration collage concert?
The collage concerts. We had cut that because of a funding process there, and there was a request to be able to reinstate that.
Okay.
And I can speak to the fact that those were planned to be reinstated this year, but we were unable to do that just because of transportation, and the, the plan is in the future to continue to have the elementary ones as well as the high, eighth grade ones, as, as determined by the buildings.
All right, and so, a question for Superintendent Merritt, just so the community knows. Could you highlight the current music programs that are available to our students right now?
That's a big question. Multiple, and we'll showcase them at the extravaganza tomorrow.
I guess what I'm trying. Yes, I will be there tomorrow. I guess what I'm getting at, is there's something missing that needs to be added? Like, there's music in elementary, middle school, and high school levels. Are there certain areas that people are asking for to enhance, or just overall enhancement?
So, they're looking, the request is investment in the current programs that we have.
In the current, okay.
So, we have all kinds of band programs, orchestra programs, but just more investment. And so, there's also a conversation around what is extracurricular versus curricular programs, and some things have to be supplanted, supplemented if they're, that's the place, supplemented if they're extracurricular versus the curricular program. And over time, we've done more investment, you know, the conversations around, can we get an accompanist, accompanist? I'm saying that word wrong.
Accompanist, yep.
So, in, for, for the park players, the same way we do for the music program. So, it's looking at our existing programs, which are extensive, and just asking for more funding within those programs.
Got it.
And even accompanists at the middle school choir class. So, you know, those are, you, you just see very specific things as well as very general things around the programs.
That helps with clarity. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
All right, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there any programs that we have asked the participants and families to help pay and fund that we can reabsorb back into our budget? So, the, the families don't have to invest as much financially into the music programs. Let's say like.
Marching band?
Marching band. Yeah.
So, we did talk about having a future discussion on, you know, certain things when we're talking about not curricular programs. So, if you look at curricular programs, we see certain things as, it's the same as a textbook. So, we're gonna invest in, you know, if we need to make sure that we, what am I, improvements to the, what am I trying to say? Maintenance of, of.
Instruments.
Instruments, that's gonna be included. Parents wouldn't pay for that. Extracurricular, at times, we have booster clubs that, that support that. And so, just conversations around, is there equity in what's funded between athletics and activities? And, and so, that definitely would be, you know, future discussion. The good thing, in terms of capital improvements that are being made, will enhance many of those programs right now. So, that'll be something that, in the past, before we had bond support and facility upgrades, oftentimes, you would see the boosters pay for facility improvements. And so, this will be something that we'll be working on as well.
Yeah, I just remember back in the day when I went through the program, way back when, everything was free.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't have to, my, my family didn't have to invest anything. And, and I, I know it's changed throughout the years, and more and more of the financial has been moved over to the families and likewise with sports and that. And I was just wondering if there's any way that we can start bringing that back into the school budget?
So, we may pay for certain basic things, but maybe one program, they want to bring in a specific trainer for, to really work on their pitchers. And that might be something that the booster club says, hey, we're gonna fund this additional trainer for that, so, you know.
And the conversations that we had at F and O was that we wanted to have a broader discussion around, around all the extracurricular and, and, and activity programs and the athletic programs to say, what's the basis that we use for funding? How do we choose to fund one program as a district-sponsored program and one program to be a club sport? How do we have, how do we set the funding levels that we do for marching band versus for other activities? And so, just to have a broader discussion for that overall, and that would give us an opportunity to say, is there changes that are merited in this process? We weren't proposing to do that for this budget cycle, but it certainly was something that we think is important for us to do a re-review on that. And we had done this, I think, once, maybe three or four years ago. But it's a chance for us to take a look at it again with largely a new board that we've got.
Ms. Chastain?
I don't have any questions, except for this section.
Ms. Christensen?
Yeah, again, along the lines of the funding for the district music programs, was there anything specifically about expanding the programs, like bringing them down to the elementary level? For example, orchestra for elementary students, or, you know, band for elementary students?
I, I don't recall that specifically in the questions. The responses, I mean, I didn't see that one this year. I have seen it in past years, but it did not show up in this year's response.
Really don't have any questions. I do have a comment. I really would look forward to having a discussion about how we fund, you know, the activities and athletics. I think that that's something that we should have a discussion about and get community input on that also.
Agreed.
And, oh, and then, was there any discussion in, in there about having orchestra at middle schools? Because it's currently offered at the high school. And I'm just, like, sometimes that, that bubbles up quite often about, hey, I'd like to have it at my middle school because getting your child to the high school at seven is not always.
Nothing specific.
Okay.
Again, it's something that we've seen in past years, but nothing specific.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next section here is on human resources. And this next section, the first item here is, is reducing the number of administrators due to declining enrollment. And although we've seen declining enrollment, we've seen a greater need for staff than a declining need with the social emotional needs, with the needs for us to improve the activities that we're doing. We're adding those staff, as we just saw this evening, with the middle school support staff that are there. Those people would officially be considered administrators, but those are things that are helping out our students at that level. So, I don't, at least from my perspective, I don't believe this is something that we're looking at. Salary reductions for staff earning more than a hundred and six thousand dollars in all board administrative, board office administrator salaries. Again, we're struggling, as most businesses are, in hiring. We see ourselves hiring people in the middle of the school year, whether it be staff or administrators, that this is not an area that we're looking at for reductions right now. Along the same lines, you see increased staff benefits and pay. And along those lines in that process, we always work with our, with our bargaining units as part of the, the contract negotiation process. The vast majority of our staff are included in those things, and that's where the staff pays and benefits are included in that, that process. Do not pay non-classroom staff more than you pay teachers. Again, same, one of those same competitive conversations around what the people do and what is their role in the process. To give bonuses for every staff member who worked in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year and return for next year. This is an item that the government, governor has already included in her budget proposals, and there seems to be interest and willingness to, to do this from the state legislatures as well. Obviously, we'll have to wait until we hear that come through, but there is certainly a recognition around the state in needing to support our teachers from that budget process. And then the interest in offering social work services at the preschool level. We had a conversation about this, that this is, our preschool program is a tuition-based program, and one of the things that we're struggling with right now is, is hiring. You know, this is something that, even if we had the budget to be able to do this, we don't have the support staffs that we need to really support these social work services, and we've really struggled in, in doing that hiring process overall.
We, we did also share that there are certain programs in preschool. So, our preschool GSRP, as well as our PCEP programs, we do have social work services that are associated.
And our early on services too.
Which is our youngest learners, that they go to the homes and work with families.
Patty?
Mr. Wilson?
No question.
Mr. Brooks?
I have no questions.
All right, Ms. Chastain?
Oh, is there more in HR? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there's more in HR. We'll come back, we'll come back to HR. So, I'm sorry, we'll give you guys a second. So, hit my button here, there we go. Expand the, the SEL program at PCEP. You know, this is, there's been a lot of input on the SEL program to be able to, to do these things, and there was a lot of input in this process. You know, I think that that's one of the things that's actually under discussion and having conversations with the staff at the, at the high school and how the SEL program is working and what they can do to, what to keep, what to improve, and what is, wasn't working for them. Hiring social workers in every building, as we mentioned. This is an area where we'd actually allocated the funds for, but we really struggled with providing some of those types of services at, at each of the buildings, and it is something that's important to the board as we go through this process. Para-pro, para educators for special education. You know, I think this is, again, one of those staffing shortages that we've had for quite a while and that we're really struggling to get those people as part of that. I think it ties directly into the next one here, on the wages for para pros, hiring more and giving them proper training. So, you know, obviously, people are feeling the pinch that we have with our paras, which are some of our most valuable staff in supporting the, the students in this process. And we've got a number of openings still at this point in the school year from the hiring perspective. Permanent occupational therapists and other therapists, you know, twenty-five FTEs was the request as part of this process. I don't know if we've got the budget to be able to do that, and I'm not sure we could find the people, but this is an area that is definitely a focus for us as a board as we go through that. Reduction in class sizes, we see this oftentimes. Almost every year, we see reduction in class sizes coming in the budget process. The, from a, a dollars perspective, every student reduction in cost, class sizes is one point six million dollars each year, every year. So, that, without changing the funding model that we have coming from the state, I mean, there's a lot of talk about doing that. It would be tough for us to make some of those kinds of substantial class size reductions. And the, the data that we've seen is, is one student may not make a big difference in that. But if you can, you know, make a huge reduction in class sizes, you might be able to make a big difference as part of that process. Unfortunately, from a funding level perspective, that would be hard for us to do and maintain. Recruiting teachers from local colleges, pay stipends to student teachers. Recruiting teachers from local colleges is something that the HR team is already doing. We work very hard to try to, to get people from our local universities and local colleges to be able to join our district, and that's one of the things that, that we do as part of that process. With respect to stipends, there's state law that prevents us from doing that. So, we're not able to do that, that activity. That's a restriction from us as part of that, that, that process. The hire more elementary math interventionists. This is definitely something that's on the, the, the process as we look at how we support our, our teams. The trauma-sensitive training for the entire staff, and I believe that this is scheduled for the spring within the district, correct?
We'll be talking more about this this evening.
We'll be talking about it this evening, then, fantastic. Dedicated behavior special, behavior support in all, in all buildings. We've done these things for the last two years to provide this process, and we still have open positions. This is one of those really high-end demand positions, and it's been challenging for us to hire from this. So, I'm sorry, now we can start our questions.
All right, Mr. Wilson?
So, two quick questions. One, what goes into that one point six million? So, you said it takes one point six million to reduce the class size by one student. What, how is that calculated? What goes into that?
It's the number of additional teachers that you have to hire in order to, to, to do that across K through twelve. Is that?
That's correct. So, it's about approximately about twenty additional teachers, K twelve, if you were to reduce the class size.
Got you, okay, thank you. And then, so much about hiring new staff, you know, providing raises, things of that nature. How are we thinking about this from a sustainability standpoint? So, if we're bringing on a lot of new staff into the district, obviously, a lot of the funding that's coming in is COVID funding. How do we make sure that in X amount of years, you know, we don't have to reduce the number of staff?
That's a great point, and that's one of the things that we've actually talked a lot about, both in F and O as well as in our board meetings, is how can we take advantage of the momentary increase in funding that we've got through this COVID process to create a sustainable difference for us long-term? And so, I think that there's some, a lot of planning that's going on right now to take, try to make those investments so that we can spread that out. But it's also the support that the community has given us. A lot of the investments that we've done to date have been because the community has supported us with the regional enhancement millage. And that's where we've been able to make some substantial hires that we've done and then be able to sustain those things in providing counseling and special, or, or, or support services as part of that process. Along the same lines, and we're renewed for our, for that, for the next six years? For the next six years on our, our enhancement millage, which is fantastic, with the certainty that we get of that additional funding. But there's also the, the conversations that we have with our state legislatures, with our governors, with our representatives there, because we need to continue to make that investment in schools. If you look at the, the educational collaborative and the, and the, the money that they said three years ago that we needed to have to provide a adequate education, we're still nearly a thousand dollars away from, from that on a per, a pupil basis. So, we need to get those additional funds to make sure that we can make those kinds of investments and be able to really support our students in the, in the right way. And so, we can advocate for that, but, you know, ultimately, it's, it's about planning and strategy to help us to address some of those things right now. And that's something that's going on right now in the budget process.
And I think part of it's gonna be storytelling on if we hire these new positions, this is the, the outcome. And then being able to continue to tell that story to the community so that, as we look at millages and some of these other, or even as we go to Lansing, you know, we have the story to build to show that we need to maintain these levels, if not even increase these levels, based on the, the data that we're receiving, that this is improving the education for our, our students.
Yep, and that's exactly right. And just to clarify, it is going to Lansing. We're not able to raise local millages outside of the regional enhancement millage, which we're set for the next six years. There's nothing we can do locally to increase the funding to support those, those staffs. It's all done at the state level.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I was, I was wondering if there was any way that we can share teachers, like with the local community college. I don't know now, but when I went to school, there was night classes, and I had elementary, or I had my high school teachers teaching there at night. I was wondering if there's any way that we could get with, like, school craft and maybe for one or two classes during the day, if you have teachers or adjunct teachers at the college level that would want to teach during, during the day at the local, our local district, to see if we could supplement our teaching with that. Because I know we send kids back and forth and that, so, okay.
At this, at this point, we're, we're staffed in providing that from our own teachers. Looking at opportunities, as you've heard, for students to receive dual credits, but that's not looking at replacing our staff. So, different programs to give student support, but definitely wanting to have our own PCCS teachers to provide the curriculum K twelve for our students.
Ms. Chastain? Yeah, this is, this is a specific to the budget, so I won't beat a dead horse around reduction in class size. But I do want to have the conversation, because this is a budget conversation, so you've already talked about the barriers to doing it from a budget perspective. But I'm curious, what other models have we looked at? Is there a benefit in having reduction in class size for the lower, you know, the itty-bitties versus high school? So, I want to come back to that, but that's not this conversation, because this is specific to the budget.
That actually can be part of this conversation. In fact, we. In fact, we, we've talked about that before as part of the dynamic plan. You know, the conversations that were, or the suggestions that were in the, the budget process overall were more broad-based. But I think it's worthwhile for us as a, as a board to have a conversation of, is there something that we can make a disproportionate investment? We already have smaller class sizes in our kindergarten and our first grade. Are there additional reductions that might make a difference in some of the activities that we see? And you know, we saw some of the data that we're seeing learning gaps that start early. And I think that some of that's actually already perhaps in discussion. I don't know whether there's any specific plans around class size or whether there's some other mechanisms that you might share with us in, in terms of that process.
We can share additional information as we move forward, cause there is conversation around models and effectiveness of models. And we're pulling data on our current implementation models to look at what's working, what's not. And so we're gonna, we're gonna share some additional information and also looking at, as we move forward over the next couple of years, enhancing some of that, utilizing some of the ESER funds to look at some pilot programs that will kind of dig in a little bit differently and how we might get some really solid data on what, what's going to make those gaps disappear.
So my only comment on that, since I have the microphone, is be bold. Don't, don't start with a small pilot. If you think that, if the data shows that this.
No, no, I'm not talking about a small pilot.
Okay, if the data shows that this is going to make a difference, then make the difference.
We're not talking about a small pilot, so let me just clarify that.
Just looking at delivery model. So even if you look at over the last two years, we've had classrooms sitting at 15 to 18 students. But it's, what are we doing and what supports are we providing? And that's, that's the different conversation. That might be a really bold shift in how we do business and looking at the data.
If, if a part of our dynamic plan is for us to be an innovator and a positive disruptor, that's what I'm looking for. I think that's what our district is asking us. If this keeps coming up, I just think if something continues to come up year after year, we have to then give an answer to that and to be innovative in our approach.
It's not necessarily about the class size, but how we're delivering instruction.
Yes, and.
Ms. Christensen?
No questions.
Ms. Sedu?
Thank you. I have a few. I do want to pick back up what member Chastain said about smaller class sizes and targeting it where you see the biggest need. So it's not a blanket all second and third graders. I think looking at the data, it could tell us a lot about where that need is. I know research goes both ways about smaller class sizes and I do want to take that up in SPA at some point. And to say, you know, what's good for our kids and, and try that. And we've talked about the different models as well. But I really want to look at it holistically in terms of not just what the research is saying, but look at what other teachers are doing in other districts that's working for them. And what makes sense for our kiddos? Our kiddos benefit from a smaller class size. When they can make that personal relationship with a teacher, they benefit. So are there other ways that they can make those relationships in a targeted way for some areas where the need is the greatest? So I guess this is something that I'd like to just maybe add to SPA for a future item in terms of smaller class sizes. And there's one more. So remember Kehoe, I kept hearing that we have all these positions that are vacant and we are looking for people to get into those positions. We have these needs, we have positions. I guess that's the other area I want to talk about, what are we doing different to recruit people? And so it's kind of like, yeah, we have these openings, but are we using the standard protocol? Are we going out there pulling people from different areas to say, come work with us? Or again, do something really, really different out of the norm to get these positions filled, cause these are important.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. And you want to share a lot of different things that we've done. The reality is, we know that we're dealing with the national staffing shortage in all positions. And so we're, we are doing some creative things to, to get, to grow our own, and talk a little bit about that.
Sure, so there is a, a national staffing shortage and, but there's still no excuses cause we do have to figure out how to continue to fill positions in our school district. So we have a variety of ways that we post positions besides the ways that you might see within the district. We use online sites like Indeed, we work with our university partnerships, we use Schoolcraft College, we use large organizations like Metro Bureau to push out job postings. We also have had, we attend many job fairs. We also create flyers for certain positions. Most of the positions that are currently open right now are support level positions. For example, Nutrition Services has many open positions. We have many openings in the paraprofessional department. And so we are looking at different ways to recruit. We have asked all building principals to post in their newsletters. We made them posters, cause we know that looking for parents and community members to fill these positions that are during the school year positions is probably our best way to fill them. We've also had our own job fair at the Canton Library to try to recruit some people into our district for a variety of positions. So everything we're doing is helping a little. Not one thing is going to solve the problem. We have to do multiple things.
We've done some creative hiring in advance just for elementary certified teachers. So they're fresh out of school in December, hire them without a specific position, been able to utilize them in open positions, and then they're already in our rotation. So definitely looking at multiple ways to attack the problem.
What about increase in pay and offer benefits and a bonus, sign-on bonus?
So you as a board did do some bonuses. We've negotiated some contracts and as Trustee Kehoe talked about, that's all through that negotiation process. And so we've worked with a goal of being competitive in order to not just recruit, but really looking at retaining, cause people can leave. And that's really, really when you talk about taking from other places, it's taking from each other, which really isn't helpful in our overall organization for education. But that's what happens, people can go other places and get credit for steps. So just having some creative ways within, those are all conversations.
Okay, I'd like to continue those, especially to retain the great staff that we have right now. All right, that's it.
So when they talked about salary reductions for staff earning 106,000 for administrators, is that, is that somewhat maybe of a community education piece what we're missing? That people have this idea that there's a lot of, like, most of the people that are classified as administrators have specific tasks that they do that support students?
Majority of administrators are actually in the buildings, they're in your school buildings. So, I mean, I think there's definitely an opportunity for us to improve our, our, our education and awareness of what those staff are, cause you know, they can look at the transparency reports on our website and they might see a number of administrators there, but not recognize what those roles are and what that process is.
Well, I also noticed on the transparency, it includes, so the final column is, it includes wages on what's paid into MIPSERS insurance. So if you're just looking at that last column, it's, it really overstates what people are making because it includes many things that aren't actually your take-home wages. And so you can have, you know, a teacher who coaches two sports, you know, that shows up because, but they've got, you know, their full-time job and then what amounts to part-time jobs.
Yes.
And I don't think people are talking about that, but I don't know that that's something people recognize. Oh, just wondering.
More questions?
Go ahead.
I was wondering, is it, do, do we know what types of positions that the colleges are presenting to the students on what possible jobs other than teaching in the educational systems that there are like para pros or therapists or any of that other stuff? So, because I know when, if you go in for teaching, that you want to be a teacher, but there's all these other positions that could be involved with that. And do they actually tell you that they, they try and have those types of classes for these students? So they can go this way instead of, you know, like you do in, in, like nursing or, or you know, some of the health positions, you have like x-ray technician, this or that, or office administrations?
Sure, so college students have an opportunity to look, look at a variety of programs. And a college student would know through their advisor that if you wanted to work in a public school or any school, you could be a social worker, a speech pathologist, a teacher, an occupational therapist. And also those positions, you could also work at a hospital. I mean, there's just so much you can do with so many positions. Also, a local college like Schoolcraft would offer two-years degrees with those who might want to do something in child development.
Okay, so there, so the opportunity there is, is present at the colleges, so they know what we're looking for? The types of jobs that we're looking for.
Based on my experiences at universities, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, next section is maintenance and custodial. Adding filtered water bottle filling stations district-wide. Many of our schools have had these things already, either as part of the renovation programs that have already been done or because PTOs have funded these particular programs or whether they were investments that were made at the local school level using discretionary funds that were there. As we do the additional renovations in the schools, these are definitely one of the things that we consider as part of that process already. Purchasing new furniture and tables at Salem High School. This would be one of those things that would be considered as part of the renovation program there. I don't believe this is actually on our current renovation schedule at this time, but it's definitely something we should, we can consider. Creating an outdoor pavilion at each, at every school. This was designed, done in response to the success that we had with the picnic tables that were deployed during the COVID times and that they saw that both outdoor lunches as well as outdoor collaboration spaces were very valuable in that process and trying to create ones that would work rain or shine in that, that type of process. Developing a recycling program. Right now, the district is only recycling cardboard and paper and there's an interest in having us to do other things beyond cardboard and paper. Beautification initiatives district-wide. There's a lot of these things that exist today at the PTO level and there was a desire to have this be something that's done more across the district. A new building for Bird Elementary. And as we've talked in the last few meetings, we're not planning on replacing Bird Elementary, but we are making a substantial addition to Bird that will give it a dedicated space for, for the gym as well as for the cafeteria and for a performing space, as well as dedicated space for arts and music, which have oftentimes been a challenge at Bird where they've had art on the cart. Constructing a covered walkway at PSEP for passing time. This is one that comes up every year. I appreciate the, the, the interest in it, but it's probably unlikely to occur because of the cost that's part of that process. But it's, keep bringing that suggestion forward. Upgrading the ventilation systems. This is designed to help improve the flow of air, as we've seen with the COVID, COVID, that, that as an airborne disease, having improved ventilation systems is a really strong mechanism to address those, those processes. We've invested in those air purifiers. This is a request to do additional investments and I think that it'll be one of those things that we look at as we do those upgrades, if we can put in higher quality filtration without taxing the, the existing systems. Cause it's very energy expensive for us to run those systems the way we have right now. And this is definitely something that we can consider as we go forward. Upgrading our parking lots, driveways and reducing traffic issues. This is one that we've seen continuously and this is part of the bond program already. So we continue to have a number of upgrades that occur here. I think this one in particular, if it's not here, nope. This might be the one where they wanted to reduce the traffic issues specifically entering and leaving Plymouth High School. And this has been a notorious problem for us. And there's not any really easy answers for that right now, but it's certainly, as we look at this process, it'll be one of those things that we'll consider. Installing new electronic signs at all buildings. As you've seen from the elementary upgrades that we've done, every time we do these big renovations, we're putting new electronic signs into those buildings as part of that process already. And we'll continue to do that. Investing in solar panels and open spaces. You know, this is one of those things that we continue to look at to see whether that, if that makes economic sense. So far, it's not been economically viable for us, but it's definitely one of those things we continue to look at to see whether those types of renewable energy sources would help us offset our bills and be able to be good stewards in the, in the process. Investing in better infrastructure and safety. And this is one of those things that you've seen throughout the bond program, whether it be the, the Sally ports that we put in all the elementary schools, whether it be the gates that we have at the park, the bolsters and the billiards that are, that are there to prevent people. We continue to make those investments in, in security and safety and we've been able to get good grants as part of that process as we've gone through this. Questions on maintenance and custodial?
Mr. Brooks, we'll start with you.
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Chastain?
No.
Ms. Christensen?
Just an observation, a lot of this does seem like covered in our current bond or great suggestions even for future bond funding projects or sinking fund projects. I think these are really great snapshot of what people are concerned about at our buildings. I personally enjoy the third bullet point there, or dot point, excuse me. Create an outdoor pavilion at every school, thinking about, you know, extending our learning areas to the outdoors, not only due to COVID, but just taking advantage of that opportunity. You know, to engage with our students in a new setting, I think is really compelling. But those are all just comments, no real questions.
Ms. Sedu?
Thank you, I have a few. So I know every year we get this, the cover for PSEP, the walkway for passing time. Just so we know and we can let the community know, do we have an estimate as to what that would cost and what that would look like? And if not, could we get an estimate just so we could let the community know? It's X amount of dollars, which is cost prohibitive.
I think in the current thinking right now is we're looking at safety and security based on what's happened locally as well as nationally. So Mr. Myers and I and Mr. Tiskowitz are all working on the bond committee to prioritize safety and security first. And then I'll say comfort second. And so I can get that, it just, it will take a long time to get an estimate, but we're, we're prioritizing safety and security right now above all else.
So when you talk about safety, security, are you thinking about closed walkways or open walkways?
I'm thinking of walkways that would preclude someone from either driving on or entry to our park setting. And so closing off the viability and making it more a closed setting.
Okay. All right. Another explanation we need to give to the community, cause it's pretty complicated, cause we get asked that a lot. And I'd like to have a good answer as to why we can't do that. The other one, do we have, or can we make sure that every building gets a bottle, bottle filling station? I know it's part of the bond, it's, buildings are being worked on, but is it a goal that every building will have one?
Yes, I believe that already occurred.
Perfect. My next one is the solar panel cost question. Can we get an estimate as to when the cost benefit analysis, doing the cost benefit analysis on this, when can the cost go down for electricity based on solar panels?
So we do do a study every couple of years or so as, get a proposal from a solar company. The issue is our green space is very valuable at the park. And so we have so, so many sports fields and practice fields. We would not want to give up green space. And so we'd probably look at putting that on a roof somewhere. So we would look at that when we're going to replace a roof at one of the three buildings at the park.
Got it.
And the requests would be at other buildings as well, it's just that the economics are the same at every, at every facility.
Okay. And a couple, just a few last things. I'm thinking about bullet four, develop recycling program to expand into plastic, metals, et cetera. Is that something that high schools do as part of like a club? I know when I taught, our students did that as part of a club.
Well, we had to have a trash, or part of our trash, request or proposal has to include that recycling and then it has to be part of that, dovetail into that. And so it ends up being almost more costly than it saves at this point, but we can look at that when we look at a tra, our next time when we look at a trash bin.
Yeah, that would be great.
The struggle with recycling programs as a whole right now is, is that as China changed their environmental policies,
That true.
it is no longer really economical for most of that. So the vast majority of recycling right now is diverted into the waste stream. So you can feel good about it, cause you put it in your blue bin, but it's going right into, into the landfill. And then it costs us more as part of the process.
Right, good point.
There are exceptions though, for things like metals. So metals have got a high. No, glass actually is really not recyclable at all. Nope, glass is one of the worst.
Okay, learned something.
Paper and, and metals are highly recyclable though.
So that's the other thing we could educate the community on is to, I mean, people have great suggestions. So that's the other thing we could educate the community on is to, I mean, people have great suggestions. And rather than saying no, I'd love to educate them on why it's not possible. So we're learning new things as to why it's not possible. And lastly, I do want to echo what member Christensen said about those outdoor pavilion spaces. If we can continue to expand those and look at creative uses of those spaces.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to push back on the covered walkway. I have a 15-year-old disgruntled PSEP student, so I just want to go on record as saying that I did push back on that, so if the record would reflect that.
So noted.
It's on video.
I want a second that.
I want a third that from all the kids in the neighborhood.
My son wears shorts to school all year round. He does not need a covered walkway.
Just know that I've been pushing for covered heated walkways. My kids graduated in 2018. No progress.
Just as long as the pavement is smooth and non-trippable.
I don't have anything. Everybody asked questions.
Okay, great. So the next section is teaching and learning, and there's some good sections here. The first particular one is around allocating students for purchase of library materials. Or allocating $5 per student to purchase library materials. This is more about a function of library budgets overall than specific individual choice for students. It's really making sure that there is enough investment that's going into the library process and the books as part of this. The next one that we have here is, I'm sorry, on that first one, there's actually a grant that we have that, it's called the Nichols Trust, and we've been working to spend this money. This is specifically allocated to library resources. So, you know, this is one area in particular that we will continue to make investments in. There certainly is opportunities to do more, but this is one that we'll see some specific investments. Rethinking reorienting curriculum tracks away from traditional subjects and towards solving society's massive problems. The request was around some project-based learning and some other activities. Perhaps, Ms. Rail, you've got some, there's been a lot of work that's been going on from a teaching and learning perspective on this front.
And when you think about the dynamic plan, you see this in the innovation section where we talk about authentic learning experiences and student-centered learning experiences. So this kind of dovetails with that work.
Next one is halting the purchase of textbooks that are not used. We look very closely at whether the textbooks are going to be used in purchase, in our purchasing process. As we see that shift more towards electronic devices, we may move away from everybody having a physical textbook and purchasing them on demand for those students as part of that process. Offering more art classes at PSEP and increasing the art budgets. Much like music, this is an area that we see wanting to make additional investments in our visual arts, our photography arts, our other arts programs as part of that process. Purchasing district-wide licenses for commonly-used apps. So this in particular was about, sorry, I had this one and I missed it in my notes. So these are things like remind and elementary spelling apps and other activities like that. I think that this is one of those things that we would work with the principals on and be able to make sure that we've got a consistent investment as part of this process.
Yep, and we annually review all of the apps as a district team, and apps and websites and software purchases, both through the technology lens, through the instructional technology lens, and the teaching and learning lens. So we elevate those things to the district level that are K-12, and then we allocate those purchases.
Purchase Dick, I'm sorry, pilot a STEAM program at the elementary level. So STEAM is including the arts in addition to the science, technology, engineering, and math. So we've had a lot of conversations about this at that level, whether it might be an additional special or something around those lines, but you know, that topic comes up often. It might be something for us to discuss as a board. Japanese language classes in the middle and high school. You know, there certainly is, as we see demand for specific classes, that's when we offer those classes as part of that process. And there hasn't been that demand at this point in that. Early literacy materials for K-1 and reading interventions. Providing upgraded curricula for English language learners. I know that that's been a substantial investment that we've been doing in that front, that we've talked about at both the dynamic plan as well as the other activities. Purchase level readers that reflect the community. This is about our diversity inclusion, and it's very much embedded in our dynamic plan and our curriculum and everything else that we're doing. Creation of a standalone IB school. You know, we have a pretty successful IB program that's within the high school, and then we, because of the number of, the size of our building and the ability to offer additional classes there, it gives us more flexibility of having teachers teach one IB class versus having them have to be a dedicated IB teacher. So this is probably not something that we would do initially. That's curriculum, and then we'll do instruction separately. So feedback on this one?
Ms. Chesting?
I had a daughter graduate from the IB program in 2020. To have some specific thoughts about what that could look like and would look like and the pros and cons to that. But again, at 858, I don't want to go into it in great detail, so I look forward to talking a little bit more about that as we go through the budget process.
Ms. Christensen?
No questions.
Ms. Sedu?
Yeah, I would like to echo member Chesting's comment about having more conversations about the IB, particularly expanding it to elementary and middle school. I know many families look for IB K-12, and we lose some kids because other schools offer K-12 IB. I think that's an important discussion to have, whether it's through SPA or as a whole board. Definitely would like to do that. There was... That's it.
I'd echo that feedback on, we had K-12 IB in our process overall. This particular suggestion was more about having a dedicated IB school the way some other counties do, like, I'm sorry, Oakland County has a countywide IB program.
Okay.
Mr. Brooks?
No questions.
I wanted to discuss the IB, but not right now.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, I think, similar to the level readers that reflect the community, you know, I'd like how we can start to look at resources, allocating the resources based on some of our strategic focus that we talked about. So similar to that, closing the gap, I think is something that the board has signaled strongly that, you know, we're really serious about continuing, well, continue to be serious about focusing on. And so I would love to see how we can start to identify the resources clearly that we're putting towards it, similar to how we're able to say, you know, these readers are going to help us from an equity standpoint. And then in addition to that, student-centered is one of our pillars, one of the things that we really talk about. So looking at student-centered and student voice as a part of that. You know, I'd really like to have a deeper conversation on how to elevate student voice within the district and put resources behind that voice to really empower them to help take a lead. And I think that that can go hand in hand with things like equity, closing the gap, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to signal that to the board. I think that that's something I would love to have a deeper conversation on.
So that's a specific thing that's not necessarily captured here, but I think it's really good. Is that something that, you know, specifically an action on putting the funding behind student voice is what you're advocating?
Absolutely.
So Monica, is that something you guys can take away from and incorporate into your planning of how do we?
I thought maybe at the last meeting you talked about, maybe we're going to talk about that discussion? Where's the whole idea? We talked about it?
Yeah, I think we did talk about it.
I missed the last meeting, so.
No, I think that our board governs.
Yeah.
By board governance.
I think we had a conversation that we would start here, and if we need to go deeper into SPA, we could do that to flesh out the details.
Correct.
So I think using this time to have that conversation to say, yes, it's a priority, we believe in it, we want to allocate some funds to that, that's the process we need to have here.
So I think then, at least I'm hearing consensus from at least a few, three or four board members that this would be useful, then the question is, is you got to move quickly at SPA, because budget is now.
Right.
So if you want to make a change, then you've got to do it like in weeks, days and weeks.
Got it.
So our next SPA meeting is April 6th. Maybe at that point, we can have this as a main item and dig in deeper into what that could look like and bring it to the next board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it can be a suggestion. I mean, even just coming out of SPA, you don't have to wait till the next. You can bring it up as a discussion topic for the next board meeting, but, you know, we're not voting on this as a board. This is a suggestion for the administration, and I think that you're providing some structure around the goal that you have as part of the process through the SPA activity. And, you know, the administration will bring it forward, or they'll tell us why they can't do it, but, you know, just move quickly.
Yeah. So we'll add it to the agenda for SPA and then bring it to the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
We're ready to move.
Okay. So teaching and learning instruction. Create a digital arts area to support photography instruction. I think this particular one was around making it so that you had dedicated arts areas within the building to be able to showcase some of those visual arts programs. A crease that was more, both in terms of exhibiting as well as one that was more practical for teaching photography, that the multipurpose rooms that we have right now are not as functional for that kind of digital arts activities. Implementing more effective reading instructions, K through eight. Students needing textbooks, so we saw previously, students don't need textbooks, students need textbooks. So, you know, we oftentimes see that as part of these budget processes. Continuing the automotive education and expanding in the skilled trades. This is an area that we get a lot of input on, and it's an area that we've continued to make some investments in to provide alternative pathways for people and to really take advantage of the market gaps that are there in those skilled trades. You know, whether you be a plumber, electrician, or welder, those people get paid very well, and they're in huge demand right now. Expanding summer school course offerings and after-school tutoring to make up for COVID learning loss. And we did a great job of this last year, and I understand that we're going to continue to make those investments this year in our summer programs. Having a fifth special to include foreign language, potentially Spanish at the elementary level. Having a VAPA instructional coach and a fine arts coordinator. And Monica, we spoke about this, and I don't really remember what this was. This was...
So we used to have a dedicated VAPA coordinator, visual and performance arts coordinator, and that is a position that was reduced over the years, but we also added additional coordinators, and we've just reshuffled, is that a good word? To say responsibility. So we do have one of our curriculum coordinators that is responsible for VAPA.
Got it. So the next one is around drivers' training courses throughout the district. The state has stopped sponsoring this a number of years ago, so this would be something we would have to decide as a district is whether that is an investment that we would want to make or whether this is something that's better served by the private sector. Training teachers in Orton-Gillingham at the elementary level. I believe this is a dyslexia program. Yeah, it's a dyslexia program that they want to have supported there, a specific program. Offering more STEM classes, providing use of the interactive smartboards, and later start time for high schools. With respect to later start times for high schools, as you know, we made a minor adjustment this year. Any substantial adjustment to start times would largely require us to make changes in our transportation process. And right now, we might be able to get the buses, but we can't get the drivers. So until we can change the equation that we have on with respect to drivers, that will be hard for us to really make any major changes at the start time level.
Ms. Christensen?
No questions.
Ms. Sedu?
Thank you. A couple of things, one is around textbooks. I just want to make a comment that some kids benefit from having a hard copy textbook, so we can't make an assumption that we don't need textbooks because they have handouts or other instructional materials. I think we need to look at each kid individually, whether they need a physical copy, whether they need an electronic copy, whether they need read-aloud functionality. We need to just invest in that and just look at what's the need based on the kid rather than making any blanket statement about what we need and what we don't need. And if we have to cater to a handful of kids, then we cater to a handful of kids because that's what helps them with learning. With the learning loss, I know we have summer school offerings, but not every kid that needs the support takes summer school. So I'd like to have a conversation around what are we doing intentionally within our current system to really attack at this and figure out what's a priority and how do we make sure we get kids to where they need to be? And maybe that's another conversation we can have in SPA. My SPA list is growing. We might need to have two meetings next month, we'll see. And just last comment with regard to the STEM classes, I saw that in another place. So I think the district does a great job of incorporating STEM, K-12. I know through SPA, we made an investment with the Maker STEM Cart. And so just want to get an understanding, all kids get that experience, correct, in the elementary?
Yep, and if you remember, last year, we brought to the Board of Education from the Media Specialists a dedicated media specialist curriculum that was designed by PCCS Media Specialists. And a portion of that was around STEAM, so science, technology, arts, engineering arts, and mathematics. And the other two pieces were lifelong readers and then information and literacy, information and literacy citizenship type thing. So there was a large investment. Thank you to the Board of Education for investing in those. And we continue to look at not just programming, but also integration and kind of alignment of those programs from pre-K through, all the way through our high school and post-secondary programs. So we're continuing to do that work, to look at it as a larger longitudinal program that helps to support each other and scaffold through, so.
And we talked about computer science standards being embedded, right? K-12 as well, so we can get more kids into computer science by the time they get to high school.
Yep, and there's some also work being done around initial framing and conversation around things like esports and some of those innovative programmings that are out there, girls who code or, and girls who game, different programs like that. In fact, I had a meeting earlier tonight with somebody who's doing some of that work and some grant funding that we can probably leverage to do that in addition to the current curricular activities that we do. So we continue to look for those opportunities to grow and expand those programs to support our students.
Great. And the last thing, whatever we can do to support teachers to teach this, I know when you look at STEM content, STEM PD, you need ongoing PD as a teacher to be able to do that well. So whatever we can do to support teachers in ongoing learning, give them time, PD here, whatever it needs to be done for the teachers, to support teachers, I'm in favor of that. That's it.
Mr. Wilson?
No questions.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, one maybe suggestion about the textbooks and having sets of textbooks that students can sign out from the media center if they really need to have a book. Because, you know, my thought, my personal thought would have, you'd have one electronic book, and every book you ever need throughout school could be transferred into that and looked. But I do agree, there's people like myself, I would love to have the hard book so I can flip through it and that. So, but my suggestion would be to be able to check that out in a large, you know, content of books in the media center for student-based, you know, individuals.
If we're talking specifically at PSEP, we actually have a book room, and we have a dedicated staff member who helps to staff that room. So it's actually a large space where we house books and teachers and students check the books out. So it's called the book room.
Okay.
Rather than it being housed in the media center, because we wouldn't have space in the media center to house all the textbooks and things.
So the other question I had was about the digital arts areas to support photography, like galleries, you know, like maybe one room dedicated for a gallery for either the hard art or the visual, digital, if not throughout the school and hallways or whatever rooms just to showcase. I know we do some of that, like especially here where we show some of the art and that. If we had maybe a dedicated space for just the digital art in each school, that, like the high schools. Do we have anything like that?
Other than our current rooms, I mean, not a specific... I guess the question would be, what's the framing look like for something like this?
The framing of this particular suggestion was to provide a space that was more conducive and that was more connected for both the digital labs as well as the traditional photography labs and making it so that you had a more connected space, because it's kind of spread out and chopped up. because it's, it's kind of spread out and chopped up.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that would look like, that would look at some infrastructure build and they need to, to build some-
What about our, our, do, do, we, we have, uh, um, video labs for-
We have a video production lab.
Video production labs. Do they have any space that they have, that they use for, um-
They're all in different places. I think this particular ask was to try to concentrate all the digital arts into one area and have something that was supporting both di- digital and traditional, um, uh, photography.
Okay.
And video.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Chastain?
Observation. Um, again, I want to be really mindful in respect of the time. I know this has been a long day for not only every trustee, but every, um, team member that's present in the building, but, um, the teaching and learning, and this is a budget discussion, so a lot of the dot points for me reinforce or are bubbling up to the surface, our commitment to addressing the needs of all of our students, like making sure that we're funding things from an equitable lens. And so I'm really excited to see that. Um, it's not called out here explicitly, but I'm going to continue to raise the issue about ensuring that we are being intentional about putting resources behind programs and services to meet the needs and close that achievement gap in a meaningful and real way and stop throwing spaghetti at the wall. And I'm, that's not an offensive statement because I know that this team tries 130,000%. But when the, the test scores continue to come back year after year, I'm sorry, we're not doing something right. And so, even with our expanded summer school and all of the extra effort we're doing, we have to do them long enough to see if they work. We can't do new summer programming every two years. So those are my only comments. Thank you.
And that, that particular one is, is something we've obviously, as a board, have all re- echoed through all of these presentations, although it may not be reflected in this suggestions from the community. It's, it's definitely, I think, we've all talked about that. Looking for the presentations to come back from the administration. Okay. Was that, did we get it?
Yeah, yeah, let's go.
Okay, transportation, last section.
I, I'm just going to remind everybody, we also have a workshop after this.
Yep, we'll go quickly. Uh, staggering start times and end times at the schools, uh, to alleviate traffic and reduce stress. This certainly could be useful, but doesn't really work in a schools like the high school where you've got, uh, very complicated, uh, transportation processes and it would be very tough to be able to, to manage this type of change. Increasing the bus driver pay and offering incentives to increase employment. Right now, the bus drivers are at 22 to 20, or sorry, $20 to $22 an hour. There's substantial signing bonuses as part of the process and those rates are competitive. We had a long conversation about this in the F and O meeting last week, that there are districts that are paying more and they're still seeing the, the, uh, the, the openings. So it's not necessarily a function of just money. There's just not the drivers out there that want to do this work, uh, at this point. At some point, that changes when you get, pay somebody a thousand dollars an hour, maybe that'll change, but, uh, I don't think that's in any of our budgets right now.
I'm not sure I do that.
Allowing families to opt out of busing so routes can be constructed appropriately. This is a great suggestion and one that the administration is actually already working on and this will be part of next school year's process, that people will be able to opt out to say that they don't need transportation and that we can, uh, address those, those routes. Renegotiating the co- uh, the contract with the transportation company to ensure proper staffing. We've already made some adjustments to that contract and we're always open to hear, uh, different suggestions that would ensure proper staffing. Crossroad at Beck and Joy, uh, expanded sidewalks where none are there, West to Ridge, resulting in more walkers. This section is actually a township and there's also county and developer roads there. So there's not a whole lot that the district can specifically do in this front other than be an advocate, uh, in that process. Fix the entrance to the parking lot at Plymouth High School to address traffic, traffic and parking issues. Second time this particular thing has come up, um, it's a really challenging, uh, intersection and a challenging process. And again, it's also largely a function of, uh, of the county in terms of like traffic lights or other work that might be there. Traffic has worsened and some bus routes being suspended. Install traffic lights at Canton and Salem and repair the chuck holes. The county is, is actually doing the, uh, the work on the, the roads now at the, at the high school. We get an email every day about how the county is now going out in the areas that they're doing their, their pothole filling in and I think that they're starting to get caught up on that work. With respect to the traffic lights, there has to be a traffic study as part of that process and then again, it'll come back to the county as part of that, uh, that work. But we are coordinating with the, um, the police department and they've provided this additional support at certain times to help us make sure that we get egress and, uh, and ingress into the facilities.
Ms. Sedu?
Thank you. Um, no comment on any of this. I know this is our last section, but I just want to make a comment in terms of, we talk about incorporating student voice into the work, student-centered learning. I wonder and I want to talk about it at a future date, what would this look like if we asked students, where do they think we need to allocate funds? And I know what Member Wilson is saying is to have an innovation type of group for kids. I think some of those discussions could lead into the conversation, but I guess my bigger wondering is, have we ever thought about asking kids to do the survey?
Yes, the kids are invited to do the survey and I can't tell specifically, but it loo- from at least my review of this, some of these responses were actually from students.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
No question.
Mr. Brooks?
No questions.
Ms. Chastain?
No questions, but one comment. And it is my last comment. This was really useful, but I feel a bit, um, when Sean sort of gave the, the comment back to our partners for the 30-minute presentation on, um, what was it on?
Custodial.
Thank you. Custodial. Custodial Services and we asked for an executive summary and to be more succinct and I think as a board, we need to role model that too and come to the meetings prepared and also have reviewed this and not actually read dot point by dot point. We could have done a better job if we're going to e- expect the team to do that for us. Um, and so I just want to say that publicly because I feel like I owe them an apology because we hold them to a standard that we need to role model.
Ms. Christensen?
No comment. Um, my comment is, that can be on our list of things that we discuss with Ms. Cross next month.
And so towards that end, um, you know, this is actually a really long list. There's a huge number of things as part of this and we wanted to make sure that all of that input that came from the community was given voice in this, uh, this process. So I would welcome as part of our board governance how we can still do spirit or still in, it support that spirit while, um, rolling this up to a higher level. So from a process perspective, uh, the final bu- finalized budget assumptions occur on April 7th. There's a, um, that happens at F and O, at the Board of Education presentation on April 12th is where we present those budget assumptions. These are really the dollar assumptions that we have that are coming from the state. This is what we s- what we're targeting our enrollment to be, uh, based upon our projections. This is what we think the, uh, that the state funding level is going to be, even though we don't know, they're the assumptions that go into this. There's about a, a dozen assumptions that are foundational to what we're doing in the, in the process. From there begins, or actually then, there is the, uh, budget transformation process. You know, the respective teams are all working on their budget right now and then rolling that together and then they collaborate to say at the administrative level is, is that how do they do the, where are the big areas that they want, want to make investments? Where do they want to make changes? How do they collaborate to, uh, arrive at the right choices? They then bring this back to F and O for review of the budget proposal. We present it to the board in May. Then through June, we have a public hearing, uh, public review of the, of, of the budget and then ultimately finalize this by the end of, uh, June when we're, we're legally obligated to have this completed.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Oh, we're done discussing. Um, all right, so now we are on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
Yep, and we have three. I'm going to invite Dr. Deirdre Brady, uh, Director of Curriculum and Professional Development to the, to the podium as well. We have three resolution first reads around purchase of materials for curriculum resources. The first one will be about biology and honors biology. The second will be around world language, Mandarin Chinese, and the third will be around word study. We'll be, we'll be doing a quick overview and synopsis and then opening it up for any questions and discussions that you have, so go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Um, yes, mindful of your, um, next presentation, they need to go, so, um, I'll try to keep this brief. The first one is in regards to biology and honors biology. We have, um, we're bringing before you this evening the purchase of materials to support both of those classes. The current resources that we utilize were purchased in 2007 and do not align with the current state standards and so it's really necessary to make sure that we have that. Um, the next generation standards for science actually have a three-prong approach to them. There's three different dimensions. Previously, so what our current resource supports is the standards themselves, so the actual content. What it's missing are the science and engineering practices, which is one of the prongs that we need to incorporate, and then also what's called cross-cutting concepts. So those are bigger picture items such as cause and effect and how you apply that across all different kinds of science concepts. And so, um, under Tanya McCrayne, we utilized, um, the same process we use for, for curriculum, which is involving teachers. We had English language learner teacher as well, um, curriculum coordinator Tanya, assistant principal to look at different resources. Teachers piloted some pieces this past year and we decided that the one that best fit our needs was actually an open education resource, which means it's a free resource for us. Um, we sometimes, I, I've come before you and talked about this a lot, that sometimes the open ed resource is not the best fit, but in this, in this case it was. So, um, what we're asking for, it's called Phenomenal Driven Storylines. It's, it, um, actually is co-written by some students, was piloted with students, um, not our students here, this is written obviously by, by others and that we're utilizing it. The purchase that we're doing, since that's a free resource, is really for the material. So biology in a traditional sense can be taught kind of more of a textbook way and that's not what we want to do. So going back to meeting needs of all students, making sure everyone can be a scientist, making sure everyone can enter into the space. This is really about making biology a more hands-on approach and that's what this resource, um, does. And so we're, we're, we need to purchase some materials to do that for a total of 106,119 dollars and 76 cents. Um, I think that's in your packet. You can see there's a lot of different things we're purchasing. A lot of them are lab materials, so we need more beakers. We need materials to actually create labs, but then there's also things, there are groceries, um, that we need to do some of that. But then there's something, um, one of the resources, Embatac, that's, um, they actually create mini lab materials that we can purchase and utilize and are ready to go. Purchasing of replica skulls, like all the things that they need to be able to look at biology and understand the world around them in a hands-on way, that, that's what the purpose of this is.
Yep, and we'll pause there for any questions. Um, one thing we will say is we, uh, discussed this extensively at SPA. Additionally, along with what, um, Dr. Brady discussed, we also got student feedback on the materials to get, um, student voice into that process. So the students who helped pilot gave feedback to the process as well, so. Just pause for any questions you might have and then we'll move to the next one. Anybody have questions? Nope.
Okay. All right. The second one is in regard to Mandarin Chinese curriculum materials. Um, there are actually three different components that are being asked for, for the Chinese class. We have one Chinese teacher. What is being passed around? You'll see, um, a textbook, which is one of the purchases, Go Far with Chinese. It has a workbook that goes with it that we are purchasing, um, hard copies of it, but there's also online resources that go with this. In light of the previous conversation, both are being purchased. There's online piece and, um, if a student needs a book, we will also have books for them. That's one piece of it, what's going around. Um, the other, the second part is something that's called Do Chinese. It is, uh, actually an app that students can use and it helps them with the, the verbal. So if they want to, they can practice that home, the actual verbal speaking of it, which is, can be difficult when they're not doing it except for in class time. And so, um, students can look up words, they can practice, they can read and make sure that it's being said the right way, all of those kinds of things. So that's, um, a five-year purchase because that's a technology person, purchase and so that would be a five-year purchase for students to be able to utilize that at home, in class, but at home as well. And then the last part, which, um, I'm going to spend just a little bit of time explaining, is our, um, novellas and leveled readers. So I know that I have come before you when we've talked about purchasing at the elementary level for reading, the, the need for leveled readers for students. The need for every student to have a book that's just right for them. Inside of teaching a foreign language, you have to kind of think of it in a similar way. A year-one Chinese student is just new to learning the language and so they can't read a higher level novel, right? They need to have something that's at a, um, a simpler level, level, but appropriate for what they want to read because they're high school students, right? So this, um, the Chinese novels and leveled readers would be in the classroom, so kind of like how we talk about, um, a workshop approach at the elementary level where students are maybe utilizing the formal textbook, they would also have time to actually read text in Chinese that are at the level they're at. So, level one readers would be reading, um, a, a more simple, obviously, book that has easier text for them and they can graduate up as their language skills become better. So it's really a three-prong approach for our Chinese program. It's the Go For Chinese, which is a 22,462-dollar ask. The app itself for being able to read and practice their verbal component with Chinese and then the novels to be able to target them for reading text, um, not, that's a, not a textbook, but an actual book, um, that would be at the level that is appropriate for them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just killing it tonight, aren't I? Okay. Um, and the third one is for word study materials. So I've, um, last year, I believe it was last year, we came before you, we've, we've been looking at research about what's missing inside of curriculum and if there's anything we need to do to better support students who need additional interventions or might need additional supports. And one of the areas that we found was inside of phonemic awareness at the K-2 level. So we purchased some pieces this past year and we've gotten feedback from teachers in regard to those materials and how they are being implemented and the success of them inside of the classroom. And 86 percent, I'm sorry, 83.6 percent of our teachers have report, K-2 teachers have reported they are, have been highly effective in use inside of the classroom. So we want to make sure that they have additional, the additional supports that they need. Um, so we want to purchase, um, more, they're called decodable texts. It's a, it's very specific to support phonemic awareness for young readers. Um, it's, it's meant for one-on-one reading with students who are in small group. It's meant, it's, it's close reading with each other to help students from, um, think intervention or, uh, additional supports. So we would like to purchase more of those for all of our K-2 classrooms and, um, all the elementary buildings for 68,258 dollars and 70 cents. We have an early childhood grant that this money would be funded out of, that's appropriate purchase out of that grant.
Does anybody have any questions? I just have a comment, uh, that sounds great. I had a child who could not decode.
Mm-hmm. It's highly important for students, especially those who, um, it, it's meant for small groups to, to really target additional supports for students.
Yep, when we think about our MTSS and our levels and tiers of, of, of support, then we, this is some of those additional supports that we talk about when we talk about our multi-tiered system of support.
Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, we are on to, uh, E, citizens' comments. I, is there anything in the box? I don't see anything in the box, we will move on. So now we are on F, action items discussion. Consider approval of resolution to adopt the PCCS 2022. Board of Education Operating Principles, first reading. Uh, this is what we worked on at our board governance session with Ms. Cross. Um, so, uh, in the interest of time, I will just read it, so we don't have to try to go around. Uh, so it says Plymouth-Canton Community Schools, Board of Education Operating Principles, 2022. As members of the Plymouth-Canton Board of Education in collaboration with the superintendent, we understand that we lead and shape the culture of our school community. As a result, we agree to collectively operate as a cohesive governance team with the following principles. All students will be at the center of decision-making, come to all meetings prepared and be an active participant, use a data-driven decision-making process that enables equitable outcomes, listen to, understand, respect diverse perspectives, engage in behaviors that build consensus, and assume good intentions, engage in critical and crucial conversations, utilize independent objective judgment, publicly and privately support all final board decisions without undermining these decisions or the positions of individual board members, even if we disagree with their final decision. Take no private action that will compromise the board, administration, or school system. Hold each other accountable for adhering to the operating principles. Um, and then after we adopt this, we will sign that. So if anybody has any, um, discussion on this, um, now's the time.
I do, I do, actually. Um, you know, we left the, the board workshop and something, um, resonated with me. I think we had moved on to another conversation and I didn't want to lose it because Members Sedu brought it up, um, how we want to demonstrate our growth mindset and that we are continuously learning. So I would like to add potentially a, a dot point or a bullet point to our list. Um, and I, I wrote this previously, so you guys can tell me what you think, but, um, that we agree to continue to demonstrate a growth mindset as we seek to learn, understand, and develop as most- understand and develop as, as members of the Board of Education.
I like it. Thanks for remembering.
No problem.
I would agree with that.
The only question I'd have with that is, is that we've written this in such a way as, is that this is the Board of Education with the superintendent or in collaboration with. So I guess it, it still is our specific operating principle so that it does work. But it's just the last thing almost is only about the seven of us, not the eight of us.
No, I think it's about the superintendent too.
Yeah, read it again.
We, we could change it to that effect because I'll read it again, but I'm picking up on what Member Keo is saying. So I wrote, continue to demonstrate a growth mindset as we seek to learn, understand and develop as members of the Board of Education. We could say as a team.
And the governance team?
So that it's inclusive of, of Ms. Merritt too.
And then I have one minor thing that just as I was reading the, the publicly and privately support one. I'm wondering if the last, the last part of this is even if we disagree with their final decision, instead of the final decision.
The final decision. Yeah.
I agree with that. Okay.
Did you get that? Yep.
Maybe second to the end.
Yeah, because we want the hold each other accountable at the end.
Be the last bullet. Last and first.
Last dot point. The dot point. All right. So follow-up board questions. Lost my last meeting. All right, so at our last meeting, our follow-up board questions. Oh, Members Keo, McCoyn, Sedu expressed interest in a meeting with Ms. Rail to learn more about funding for the early middle college. And we have a date for that and it is coming up. Members Sedu asked if a PDF copy of the Business Academy textbooks could be obtained and tested for functionality. Ms. Rail will check on this, into this request.
We're in the process of getting.
Okay. Members Sedu asked to receive information on the manufacturers and installation warranties for the new playground equipment. That was in board notes. Members Sedu asked if there was adequate storage space in our schools for the Maker Space Equipment and materials purchased earlier this year.
That is still under review.
Okay, perfect. And we have questions from tonight. I didn't capture any. All right. All right, so we are now down to the end. We are going to adjourn to a special meeting, which like most of our special, like all of our special meetings will not be recorded or taped. However, people who are here are welcome to stay. It is a public meeting. And do we need five minutes? No? All right, we do not. So we are adjourned to our special meeting. And thank you very much.